Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Aloud by a moment's silence. The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to give the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. They approve the minutes of September seventh at nineteen thirty.
We have not finished the meeting minutes. So, and we are still searching for someone that is interested in taking the meeting minutes. So if you know of someone, please have them contact me. And meantime, we are working on them and will have them up shortly.
I had a conversation with the former clerk of aldermore here. He may have a couple of candidates. He's supposed to be back in touch. Hopefully there may be a couple of names I'll pass those along.
Is that a first? Well, the next item would be to accept the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to accept the agenda as presented?
A second act. So, a motion and a second on the agenda. All those who favor it.
Discussion, yes.
Yes, sir, thank you. There's a couple of items on here. I'm not sure where they came from. Both of them are dealing with their board policies. And I don't remember this board talking big this way. And there, the one is the appropriation for litigation fees. I'm sure if I heard about that was when I saw it on board docs. And the second is this resolution asserting attorney-client privileges. Those of those would be considered board policies. And to my knowledge, we've never spoken about in open session by this board. Did you approve them, Mr. Chairman? You placed on the agenda?
Well, not really. I didn't place that on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Didn't place that on the agenda, no.
Mr. Luke and I did.
I don't believe resolutions need necessarily be put on the board docs. It's got to be on the agenda. As far as being advertised in advance and being on board docs, I'm not sure resolutions fall in that category.
That's the same problem. These are board supervisors' policies. And there was no prior instruction by this board as far as I can tell it has been done. So it appears to me that someone has exceeded their authority.
Well, I think both of these issues have to do with the fact that we've had a new issue to deal with within the last week.
Doesn't matter. It should be discussed by the board before this thing shows up on the agenda. I get calls. I don't know what it is until I see it. And it's not the way that this kind of thing is. If board supervisors find out later, they can first. This is something that we should have discussed, instructed our county attorney, county administrators to work on, and then it could be put on board docs. This is a wrong process. But this is not the first time this has happened, as you all well know.
For now, for the discussion, I'll call a question.
Well, that's the end of it, right? You're happy, you're content with being told what to do by employees? That's not what's needed.
That's why we hire employees.
You hire employees to tell the board what to do?
We don't need to discuss this. We already have a motion on the table.
Well, I asked for discussion. This is part of the discussion. You're going to cut off discussion? I'm asking a question. Is this this board's policy now to consistently be told what to do by employees? I think that needs to be addressed in the public sector.
That's the way you look at it. There's nothing we can do about that.
There's nothing we can do about that?
Nothing we can do to change your opinion that we may have a discussion or not.
Call for a question. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those nay?
Nay.
About our schools, document.
Um, thanks to the board. Good afternoon, Ms. Kaiser, Mr. Luke. I have with me today, I made six copies of each of our newsletters. And if y'all admire, they're all stapled together. There's four different editions, and you may take one at the close of the meeting today. I just wanted to share with each of you and with the audience. We have on our website now, we're doing a weekly newsletter. And the goal is to have this newsletter up by Saturday morning. And so far, we've been able to do it up by Thursday afternoon. So we're pretty excited. If you go to the rackahannockschools.us website, and if you click on Superintendent, there'll be a little arrow hanging down that will say Division Newsletter. And this kind of gives you an update on what's been going on through the week or what's upcoming. And I'm pretty excited about these. I'm going to share a few things with you as we're going along. I think you'll find them really attractive. It's nice because we can put them on the website and have them printed. And so that's saving the cost of that. But it also gives us an opportunity to have pictures of our young people and different activities going on. We're trying to have something on our newsletter each week that deals with our gift-in car program, with our special education program, with our elementary and middle school, high school program. And also a community link, something that we've done with the community or helped out with the community and so forth back and forth. So we're excited about that. One of the other things that's being shared today is I sent to Ms. Kaiser and asked her to please put on the agenda an appropriation request. We have been awarded another safety grant. This is our third year in a row. It's the twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. I really like these safety grants because we're allowed to use any monies that we've had from May on. And during that time, we were working on the portico at the high school. So we have the swipe things there. So we're actually able to put in and ask for reimbursement back for some of those. And cameras, those type things in our schools. The idea of the safety grants are to make your school a safer environment for students. And really, really pleased. We've put in from sixty thousand, we got twenty-eight. So I'm feeling pretty good about that. And each year it's gone up. I believe the first year was around seventeen thousand. The second year was, I think, twenty-one or twenty-two thousand. So we're pretty excited about that. And so if the board also pleases to appropriate that money for our school, we'll be able to accept that grant. Along with the newsletters, I want to share with you, and I believe it was the next to the last, the date of the newsletter is on the bottom. And I probably should have sorted those for you. But I want to kind of show just a couple of things. This newsletter starts out with helping minds and bodies. And when I mentioned to you before that we had a hundred thousand dollar path credit, and then they agreed to give us another ten thousand dollars for supplies for our teachers for back-to-school week. We have a really nice picture there of our grant team. And even though this actually was a brainchild many, many years ago, when they first started talking with Thought Year Health, it kind of morphed into this through the Path Foundation. But we have a wellness integration coordinator, Jackie Tiedrich, who is also a physical education teacher at the high school. And we're paying her a stipend to help the rest of us get physically fit. And so she's going to be measuring and weighing us in and all of those wonderful things. So y'all come join me for that. And we're signing up for this, believe it. Wellness Integration Specialists, we have another Jackie, Jacqueline Low Barton. And we also have Holly Jenkins, who is Dr. Gangle's daughter. And I'm sure many of y'all know Holly. And so they're talking now. But then we snagged a really good find also in a nutritionist. And we are bringing to the table Amanda Grove. And so we have met with this team. This is some of the most energetic ladies I've ever met in my entire life. They are doing challenges. And so I have to find a team, somebody that is of my age, that wants to join me because I'm going to be kind of slow-paced. But we have to come up with a name for our team when we get to compete back and forth. And so one of the first challenges is to come up with a name for the team and then to actually do a hike or somewhere around that hand. You have to take a picture of yourself hiking. Ladies, we just take a face, and that's all we have to do. And we can just prove it, and we get points. So we're going to be building up points and being able to put our names in for prizes. And just a little bit competitive. Never been so much with physical activity, but I guess that's where it's going to go now. So I don't want to lose. So if anyone wants to be on our team, please join us. We're also encouraging the community to come join us because this is a brand to bring community into the school. And so we're really excited about this. If you like to bike, if you like to jog, if you like to run, we'll have exercise classes going on. We have yoga. I can't help you with my leg up, but we have yoga going on. So we're just really, really excited about what's going on. And while all this is going on, our students are actually getting more physical activity with their classrooms. So we're pretty excited about that. Also, in this month that school has been going on, we did receive our accreditation report. And we are one of, let me get a sheet here, one of thirty-six, I'm sorry. We're one of fifty-three divisions this year out of one hundred and thirty-three divisions that are fully accredited. Last year, we were one of thirty-six. So we're going to have a few more schools become fully accredited. So we're very, very excited about that. We also have a process one at the school with Kindles. And they're using that for a program called Imagine Learning. And that's in your newsletter. And so you'll see these kindergartners using these Kindles, and these first graders, using Kindles to read and direct through the program and learning sounds and being able to decipher words and come up with little sentences and so forth. So it's pretty interesting. We also have the Lions Club that came, and they have eight of our students to help us for the back-to-school.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four of our students. And it was wonderful. And so there's a picture in there of that as well. So again, something else with the community there. We also have Bully Prevention Month is the month of October. And also, it is red ribbon. We're celebrating red ribbon, red ribbon, try to say that right. With our SAD program, Students Against Destructive Decisions, following along with the MAD program here. But him has been so good about pushing board into our schools, and we're really happy about that. So great things are happening. You will find those newsletters. They'll have a date, and you just click on it and be able to open it up. And we hope to keep this going. We have seven or eight people writing. We're all doing little words, and we're trying to prove each other's. We may have a mistake every now and then, but bear with us. It's all for good intention and trying to get the word out there. So I see any questions? Okay, and these teams members here, so please come to us. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for everybody wishing or wanting to speak to do so. Please raise your hand to be recognized. Please direct your comments to the board and try to remember them to please align them and declare a public comment.
My name is Lisa Solomon, and I wanted to, I'm in the Hampton District, Hamptons District. And I wanted to comment on the lawsuits against the supervisors. I want to say that I think all the supervisors and all the public officials have done a very good job of keeping our land open for farming and for recreation. That is not an easy thing to do. And we'd like to keep it that way. I think there are some plans that are in discussion phase to promote a more active tourism program in the county. And I think that these types of divisive lawsuits that could actually be settled by conversation or by mediation, not by lawsuits, I think they are a distraction toward the goals that we want to, you know, move toward in this county. And I think they are expensive to the taxpayers. Ultimately, the taxpayers pay for this. So I would urge the woman that has filed this lawsuit to withdraw this lawsuit. Because one of the things we want to do is we want to start marketing products of cattle, llama fur, llama wool, and other kinds of great products out here. And we will be unable to do that if there is this continual frivolous lawsuit going on. Thank you.
Yes, yes, I did not actually talk to her about this, but I was going to pick up on where she left off. But I did want to say, I'm Alex Sharp in the Hampton District. I'm also on the board of zoning deals. And I've noticed recently, there's been this kind of move. It seems like it's almost an emergency to somehow fix or save the county. And I think the county was saved probably thirty years ago or more. And I think part of what helped to do that was John McCarthy, and Peter Luke, you've been here the whole time, and some of the other supervisors back then. John, I think, developed a way of handling things that probably is missed right now. He didn't exactly go by the letter of everything in the ordinance, because the ordinance, I don't think, is a perfect document. But there was a human element to his interpretation that I think was very good. And I think Debbie is fully capable of doing that if she's allowed to. And I think the constant oversight and criticism is unfortunate. And the lawsuit, I mean, I don't even want to mention that, because that seems so ridiculous. But that is, I think, you all are doing a great job. There's a human side to it. There's not the reading of the minutia of the law and trying to find a loophole to turn someone down. At least, that's not how I see it. So I would say that if we're allowed to, instead of trying to fix or save the county right now, I think we should try to preserve some of the benefits that we've had over the last multiple years. And I think that's what I'd like to see in this waste of time and money. And it's happening in other areas of, you know, this urgency about doing something yields a lawsuit if it doesn't go through right away. I think that's ridiculous. And I hope that whoever's, you know, doing all this can sort of back off a little bit. Anyway, that's my thought. Thank you.
Dee.
Deep Deacon, Hampton District, property owner in Stoneville, Ohio. I'll second and third these last two comments. I think they're spot on. Throw my support on that thing. I think you guys do, please do a great job. I'm going to give you a little update about my never-ending saga about lowering the speed limit in Woodville. You guys appeased me with children-playing signs. I paid for them. And what I got were some, one is, looks like they brought it out of an inventory. It's a broken sign. It's a pedestrian sign. So it was promised and paid for children play, children slow down, whatever. I got two lame pedestrian. So if they're not going to slow down to thirty-five miles an hour, pedestrian thing, they're probably not going to slow down with a children-playing thing. And I'm not going to stop until Woodville gets to twenty-five miles an hour. I realize the county's got a lot of things on her plate. Children's lives are at stake. That's on my plate. So that's a heads up where I'm at right now. The pedestrian signs are unacceptable. And I'll do the P.D. dot, Ms. Kaiser. And keep you once more looking. Yeah, it's a broken record, folks. Thanks for all your help.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak? Yeah.
As a voting resident of this county, and in light of the reporting behavior of this board based on sworn statement regarding you and the FOIA statutes, I'll say that it serves none of you well considering what I see as indefensible self-serving resolutions which you have on the agenda this afternoon. Those of you who are entitled to legal defense fund and the other one attorney-client resolution, more appropriately labeled gag resolution. From a citizen's perspective, which all of you are actually in place to support and implement, they are at total odds with our, the taxpayers' greater interests. The gag resolution is irresponsible and unsupportable because the legislature's not giving you the power to implement it. This is a delus statement. You are attempting to usurp power not specifically granted to you. If you pass it, it'll be challenged, as it has been in other jurisdictions where they have tried to put this in. And they're paying dearly for it, the taxpayers. And it will cost us all money, which we don't have, in order to have it thrown out. But without the legislature creating a cutout for this type of local ordinance, it will be thrown out. As a taxpayer, I vigorously oppose the creation of a fund which can be used at the taxpayers' expense to defend a public official for wrongdoing such as violating the scriptures of the FOIA. This resolution is an effective counter to the benefits which FOIA is supposed to provide to the public. Assurances that the public's business will be public, open to scrutiny as much as humanly possible, with the fewest possible reasons to conduct this business outside of public eye. This resolution, the legal defense fund, operates as a disincentive for all of you to follow the law, because you know that the taxpayer will have to pay regardless. It makes, for us, challenging the big picadilloes, a financial burden. Who the, us, the taxpayers. We are the ones the FOIA statutes are in place to benefit, not supposed to be penalized. You, as my representative, can't keep the FOIA regulations straight and abide by them. Then please resign now. I personally don't need you, and I will not be saddled with covering the costs you incur for infractions. Responsibility for any violations, especially knowing what the FOIA provisions are rightfully the violator's responsibility and not the citizen's. There is no sound reason to insulate you, our representatives, from that responsibility. I find this proposal a direct slap in the citizen's face and attempted unjust satisfaction. Saddle us with paying for your failure to do the job you agreed to do. When the violations of FOIA are alleged and negotiated and agreed to settlements are reached, those will be the ones not dictated by the court. The settlements don't arise, don't, don't, don't arise from frivolous suits. If a FOIA suit which has been filed is actually found to be frivolous by the court, there is a code section known as the sanctions rule, which covers who is responsible for the costs. It provides for reimbursement of attorney's fees if the suit's found to be frivolous. It is effective, and it doesn't compete the limited tax revenues collected from the helpless citizens of the county. The only time there's any personal monetary jeopardy for violating FOIA provisions is when the statutes are repeatedly breached. And even then, the penalties are admissions of fines to the state library department. And even that is entirely up to the judge to read out, if he deems it's appropriate. There's no reason the citizen should pay for any of that, and there's no reason for a legal defense fund. It is entirely possible for an attorney, even a learned, longtime county attorney, to provide bad advice and poor interpretations of code used by their client. The taxpayers, that is the residents of this county, already pay the county attorney. We shouldn't, we shouldn't, why should we? Why should we pay for the consequences of poor representation? That's what the resolution does. This defense fund resolution effectively prevents any negative consequences of any kind to occur to anyone except the taxpayers when violations occur. These resolutions are both bad policy and ultimately detrimental to the citizens who pay the bills. The negatives for the taxpayer far outweigh any positives which might come from passing these resolutions. Either drop them entirely, or if they come to vote, vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm Brian, I'm in Conspiracy District. It sounds as if there's a conspiracy question here. I think if one person brings a suit against five or six people, and the only way the six people can defend themselves is to act in an open fashion and vote to defend themselves. That's far from a conspiracy against the taxpayer. If one person against the board of supervisors, if you had other people testify to their quality, they were all elected, they all spoke their minds and told the public what they felt. Now, if they are to vote on such a resolution, it will be an open discussion. You had your input. I've had mine. I don't see a conspiracy here. Do you fraud taxpayers or anyone else?
Aye.
Page Money, Jackson District. I've got a number of things, hit a bunch of parts on the agenda. The Finance Committee minutes are incomplete. If I remember the Finance Committee, it voted to expand the committee. And so before you adopt those minutes, if that's the way to remember it, perhaps you should change it. On the ordinance for rescue services, I don't understand this at all. We just did a services agreement that seems to cover it. I'm not really sure what this does, other than does it mean that the ones that aren't on it can't claim rescue services? There needs to be some more explanation on it. It doesn't make any sense at all. Right? In regards to the two appropriation items, the appropriation for litigation, I don't understand why we need a resolution to do that. You all create budget line items all the time without a resolution. All right? And you haven't identified the amount. So we haven't had the public hearing, so we're not really voting on the amount today. We just, why do you need the resolution? Just if that's what you want? And I think there's already a line there anyway, because that you zero it out to pay the rest of Peter's salary. And the other item that's in there is the BZA council. One, that's already over. And two, what was the number two? Oh, they voted, they voted not to request the money in the first place. So I don't know why you're covering that, because I don't either. In regards to the attorney-client privilege resolution, I disagree with the basic concept. On September first, Chris called me. We had a couple of discussions. We had some discussion about the issues that were in the closed session. And I absolutely do not agree with him being sanctioned or fined for that discussion. So I don't think we should do that at all. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Yes.
Cynthia Price, Stoneville, Ohio. Right now, a new county attorney is in the process of being hired, process. Some have been interviewed, some already interviewed. There may be a deputy county administrator coming along or a zoning administrator coming along, and they may combine the positions, they may not. I just want to hopefully remind everybody, and I did talk to Chris about this. I hope when you hire a county administrator or a zoning administrator, you're very careful as to the mindset of this person, the openness, the willingness to do some research, the willingness to really listen to the public. I have talked to lawyers for some of these technology companies from Richmond when they're trying to put through legislation. I know what they're like. They're slick, they're tricky, they don't tell the truth, they're talk pests. We don't need that kind of attorney. We need somebody who's, you know, yes, I see there's a problem here. Yes, I will read about it. Yes, I will listen to you. And it's not just, oh, I'm so afraid of them that I won't do anything until nineteen ninety-six Telecommunications Act, which is, was put through by lobbyists in the first place and should be repealed. So it's important that the right kind of attorney be hired. Resident-friendly, not wireless company-friendly. And that the right zoning administrator be hired. I mean, we could end up like Hopper. You know? Every block is Hopper. That's the way they are. I don't think we want to end up like that. So I just want you guys to choose carefully. It's your choice, it's the board's choice. Please choose carefully. And don't just look at their degrees. You have to know more about them. And the second thing is, Ms. Jill Lysinski mentioned the two-part public comment at the school board meetings. They have a public comment initially, and they have a public comment later. They're allowed to comment after an issue's been discussed but hasn't been voted on. And I think that's a good idea, because as it's set up now, you comment before we've made this discussed and voted on. One way to limit the time could be, and I did this and I left it in my car, tell everybody to write down what they want to say and read it. So they don't go wandering, oh, my aunt did this, you know, my grandmother did this, you know. So it's succinct, and you get through it, it doesn't take two hours. And I did do that and I left it in my car. But anyway, that's my suggestion, that we have something sort of model on board supervisors, but we instruct people, look, get your ducks in a row, stand up, say your piece, and sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Audrey Regery, Hampton District. And I'm just going to read this, because I'll put my thoughts on paper. First of all, I would like to say that I think all of you have a very difficult job. I think you do it well, and I know it must be difficult to make the decisions that you have to make. I don't always agree with your decisions. However, that's what makes our democratic society work so well. Our right to agree to disagree at times. I'm here today as a concerned citizen, a taxpaying citizen, and a new business owner. I see that Mr. Conick is at it again. I want you to know, gentlemen, you're in very good company. In the last two years, Mr. Conick has tried to sue the town council of Little Washington, the inn at Little Washington. the inn at Little Washington, he's managed verbally attack our new county administrator, and a member of the BZA board, and countless others, including myself. There are good lawyers, ones that are articulate, know the law, use it for what it's designed for, and then there are those lawyers that I call the ambulance chasers, the ones that are always looking to make big bucks off the hardships of others. And then there are the bottom feeders. These are the ones that are only concerned about themselves and if their name is spelled correctly and that their name is above the fold in the local newspaper. I'm here today to address my concerns, knowing that the budget is already popping at the seams and the county has a huge number of places that is in need of support, fire hall, sheriff's office, et cetera, et cetera, all are worthy causes, and in a normal world, that is where my tax dollars should go for, however, not in Washington, Virginia. We all know that this frivolous lawsuit is exactly that, total nonsense, a money pit for our tax dollars. All of this to appease the person that feels that everyone in town and county government is corrupt but him. If this was not so sad, it would be laughable. Shame on Mr. Conick, knowing full well that this suit will impact every citizen in Rappahannock County. I work hard for my money, and I'm sure others in this community work hard also. I know there are individuals out there that have a hard time making ends meet. Did he ever give any thought to the families that are already struggling with their monthly bills, yearly taxes at a rate that exceeds those in the other surrounding counties? How are they going to handle another tax increase? We know that two things are going to happen out of all of this. The money that will be paid out to lawyers to fight this suit will probably come from the budget, therefore putting much-needed services on hold for the community. And two, the taxes will have to be increased to pay, pay for the lawsuit. I don't know about you, but I'm tired of being the collateral damage for Mr. Conick's antics. If he is so disenchanted with Rappahannock, perhaps he should find another place to live. Yet, he has to grind, is too large for this community's budget. I think the senseless need for Mr. Conick to pleasure himself at our expense needs to be stopped. I propose a grievance be brought against Mr. Conick with the Virginia Bar Association for his disregard for our community, our court system, his frivolous lawsuits, and his constant need for personal attention. Mr. Conick gives other lawyers a bad name. Personally, I'm sick of it. Although he has been reprimanded more than once for bringing a lawsuit to court that has no standing, he has not learned anything from it. I would ask you, gentlemen, to request that your court costs and attorney's fees and possibly your mental anguish be refunded to you by Mr. Conick and his client when, as this as other lawsuits, have been thrown at a court. I don't envy you for what I know you are going through, however, I do support you, and I hope you will be able to put an end to Conick's world of terror. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here to speak?
Lee Ramos, Hampton District. First of all, I want to commend this board and the great professionals that work for it, all the hard work they do. I sit in to probably about ninety percent of board supervisory meetings and probably, oh, sixty, seventy percent of planning commission meetings. I know how hard these people work, and I do hope that the board will encourage the people who are attending this meeting today to come more often and see how it all works. Uh, second of all, on a lighter note, um, a recent article in Washington Post about the United States Park Service made a point that's important to us. Um, one little paragraph, many park visitors are now older than sixty-five, and that is, and, and, um, at that age, entrance is free to the parks, by the way. The bulk of paying visitors are between fifty and sixty, paving the way for a revenue crash in the next decade for the park service. The park service desperately needs new visitors as it moves into a new century. That's going to affect us, ever so small or so, how large, I'm not sure, but we're sitting right next to one of the greatest parks in the world, and we need to think about the people we want to encourage to come through this county on their way to enjoy the park and have them enjoy our county also, spend money, and leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ali Johnson, P. my district, but I consider this board my supervisor. Mr. Bennet is the supervisor, P. my district, but I think all of you are our supervisors, and I really, I support you a hundred percent. I think this is brilliant, you do a thankless jobs, get more thankless every day it seems to be, but I've worked with the county administrator, I've worked with all you supervisors, and there's been times, no, you don't do everything, you're not always right, none of us are always wrong, we all make mistakes, and there's been times that I didn't agree with some of you, but, but I would, I would leave the meeting, and you'd see me the next day, probably at home on the telephone or whatever, and before, one of the, uh, chairman of the supervisors passed away now, and I always said, I disagree with that man more than anybody I'd ever had to deal with, but never, never were we ever disagree. I'd go in his house, he'd leave that and pat me on the back, come on back tomorrow, because I don't, I'm going to see you again soon. But I really think that, um, this county is the way it is now because of you, because you think an awful lot, and I'm sure you, you, uh, you think before you come to the meetings, I don't think anything's ever done at, at this board at the time, as a lot of people thinks it is, but I don't think so. I think that, uh, we certainly have a good, uh, county attorney, and I know I'm going to miss him when he's gone, but hopefully we'll have one that we can come and talk with, and the county administrator. I really, really fond of the last one. I'm sure he made mistakes, like I say, we all do, but I think we have somebody that can fill his shoes if we let him, let her do it. I think all of you are doing a good job, I support you a hundred percent, and I'll be behind you whenever anybody else is out front trying to just disrespect you. And I, I think this, now it hasn't been, there hasn't been much respect here for quite a few months now, I don't think so. And I really, whether people like what you do or don't like what you do, I really think as our supervisor and put in by the majority of the people, they need to have respect for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, yeah, oh, Steve, you can speak after everyone else. Yes, Henry.
Henry Ford, I'm in Hampton District. Uh, I have an old saying, I wanted to be a lawyer, but my mother said, go into the theater.
Goodness, can you say that? I couldn't hear that.
I said, I wanted to be a lawyer, but my mother told me to go into the theater. It also works if you want to be adopted.
Same thing, right?
First of all, just talking about the general lawsuit, um, I think, uh, that this, if there was to be a lawsuit, that the lawsuit could be just directed towards the board itself, if one were looking to say that the board was in violation of the Freedom of Information Act. I think naming everybody as an independent, uh, like, naming everybody as singularly as, as, as a responsible is vindictive. Um, I know that you guys, uh, you know, paid a lot of money to doing this, I think it would hurt future people volunteering or stepping up and wanting to be interested in government, um, and therefore I think it's, at least the individual suits are really frivolous, they're just, you know, trying to break your chops, as I might use that expression, well, I just did. The other thing, um, I wanted, the, your idea that, that you want to, um, have the county pay your legal fees, um, that's allowed by the state. It's not something that you all came up with yourself, and I would dare to say that the majority of the counties in this state protect their health by having, invoking that statute, that's part of the code. And so, but, uh, the only reason you haven't done it before is, I don't think you ever could sue before. So I think that's another reason. Um, I'm all for you, uh, being able to protect yourselves and using county funds where your county employees. The other thing, um, uh, the gag order, which people call, which is not, again, I believe it's been the code, that even if you think you're wrong, you're not supposed to discuss things that are in executive session. Uh, my wife was on the school board for eight years, my late wife, she wouldn't even tell me whether it's in executive session, let alone the general public. So I think that, that you have every right in the world to say, listen, we don't want this discussed. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was the lawsuit itself, because I, I, I made a point of reading, uh, going into the park's office and reading one of the suits, and I've also read the statutes, and the statutes that Mr. Conick, um, talks about, and one of the things it says in there, you're exempt, and it allows you to discuss qualifications for future employees, and that's what the code of Virginia says. So as far as I'm concerned, when you sit down in an executive session, you discuss what a salary should be, what you're offering, or terms of employment, you're perfectly within your right to do that, and therefore I think basically the whole suit is frivolous. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Michael Hody, I live in the Hampton District. I spent some time this morning wondering whether, what I could say anything, and I realize now I needn't have bothered you, because given what the people have said, I don't have to say anything, and I won't.
That makes a real short meeting, doesn't it? Anyone else here to speak? Yeah. Mark.
I don't think I can add a lot to what people have said. I just want to say personally that I really respect the job that y'all do. I know that it is, that you don't, you, you can pay very little, it's basically volunteer work, you work very hard, you're very dedicated, and I think that I speak for hundreds, thousands of county residents, that we really, really appreciate of our board supervisors and the, uh, the amount of effort and energy put into it, so I just want to say thank you publicly.
Thank you. Yes, Tony.
Diana Bruce, P. my district. Uh, I don't think I can say it any better than what's already been said today, particularly Ali and Ms. Regery, but I want to add that I do support this resolution for an appropriation for Legal Defense Fund, or whatever it's called. Uh, I work with most of you and personally sat through almost every executive session that this board has conducted in the past thirty-three years. I can honestly say that I cannot think of a single illegal action that you took in executive session. The thirty-three years is a long time to remember, and I don't think so. Mr. Luke was always extremely careful about FOIA provisions, even so much as sending us, and I was a constitutional officer, I was clerk to the board supervisors, and served as court clerk, he sent those FOIA resolution, or, uh, informations to all of the constitutional officers. He was very careful about that. I can uncategorically testify that I never knew a single one of you to have or to vote on anything that could have been narrowly construed as a personal agenda. We were all well informed by our county attorney. Mr. Luke has provided outstanding legal counsel to this county for years. He is dedicated and thorough and brilliant. Because of his excellent representation, we have avoided numerous possible challenges. Our citizens, especially the newer ones, who do not recall all the years of good leadership that have made Rappahannock County the place we all want to live, should get to know Mr. Luke. He's a good guy, and he has a great personality and sense of humor. Some of our citizens can stand outside and throw stones at you, but they elected you to do their job. Their remedy is, one, to try to work civilly and respectfully with you and resolve issues, or two, they can vote in the new member the next time we have an election. In final, I again urge you to approve this resolution. I can't think of anything scarier, and I think I was unaware of it in all of the years that I worked. You have three constitutional officers sitting here right now, they are just learning that they may not be covered if a suit is brought. They're probably shaking in their boots too. Uh, the second I might like to talk about is the Blue Ridge Heritage Monument, I think it's called. Uh, I don't know anything much at all about this monument, except that I think it is to honor, uh, people who lived in the park or in the territory before it became the park. Uh, that's a noble cause, and I appreciate, uh, a monument and a memorial being built to my ancestors who came from Hazel Mountain and a number of others, but I'm not sure, and I don't know if it's going to be asked of you, but I'm not sure that I would like to see the county, uh, take over the maintenance and, uh, protection of that monument. I think that's a private thing, we, the people, can support it, maintain it, probably should not be placed on, on public property. The third thing I'd like to address is when you extend the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in Deeks Woodville, would you please get that in Sperryville too? Thank you, and thank you for your service. I and lots of other people appreciate what you have done for us all of these years.
Anyone else here to speak? Anyone else? Okay, I guess, no one else wants to speak, essentially, though?
Um, I don't know Dave Conick that well, but I am almost able to list, and I've always felt his intent is good. Maybe it doesn't come out right, this suit wasn't filed by him, he's representing the person who filed it. And I just, you know, I think his intent is good, he has, um, a short fuse for what he thinks is wrong doing, and maybe he should try to talk to people before he does something like this, but, um, I don't think he should be demonized. He's lived here longer than most of the people sitting in his rooms, especially Ms. Regery. She's been here maybe three years.
Excuse me, excuse me, you don't address, you don't address someone else, okay?
Okay, I'll address the board. He's been here longer than the person who, who's scarring him. She's been here about three years, he's been here decades. And he has done some good for this county, he served on boards in county, he's serving now. I don't defend him a hundred percent, don't understand him a hundred percent, I'm not in on this lawsuit, um, but I think, or especially people just coming into the county, he's not after that person, uh, to do, to say what she said, and also to write what kind of letters she wrote about him and Ben Jones, and, I mean, is a disgrace, I'm sorry, he's a better person than that. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? Lynn.
I've lived here for over thirty years, you know, I've known David Conick for over thirty years, and I can say right now that David Conick has never changed one whit, and everything that Audrey said about him is true.
I don't know. Anybody else here to speak?
Hi, uh, my name is Phil Buncher, I live in P. my district, and I'm also a attorney, and I want to tell you all a story that will put things in perspective somewhat. Uh, we used to not know a man by the name of Justice Carlisle Higgins, who was here at the North Carolina Supreme Court, and he was also the prosecutor for Georgia Japanese war criminals in World War II, and he came up to us one day, and my father asks Justice Higgins, do you think there are too many lawyers? And Justice Higgins responds, he says, not the number of lawyers, it's the quality of lawyers we have in the problem left. We don't have enough good ones. I think Peter Luke is an excellent attorney, I'm not saying that for any band besides I've ever... really believe that. I also believe that Connick is well versed in the law. I haven't read the latest lawsuit, but what I, what should be done is, if it isn't a valid lawsuit, there's a statute twenty-one oh seven point three, which is sanctions. And if it's appropriate to say, I would invite, if it's an invalid lawsuit, sanctions should be pursued in any suit that you think are frivolous. And the court will decide if they are frivolous, and if there are sanctions that come out of an allegedly privileged lawsuit, the court will take care of it. The court moves slow, but it grinds exceedingly fast. Also, as to Ms., the former clerk, Ms. Bruce's statement about the Blue Ridge Project, I would have to comment on that. That was probably the most devastating thing that's ever happened to the county of Rappahannock, at least in the history I know of things that happened in here. We had basically a third of our citizens disenfranchised and moved by force. I have a picture on our office wall of the Barbie House, which was the last standing house in the park before it was burned down. What they did to the people of Rappahannock, put park service into, or the federal government did, for the national good, was certainly a horrible thing that happened to our culture. But you all want it on public land, or private land, that's certainly your right. I'm going to speak later event, making an offer to put it on some land and give it to the county. But if the county doesn't want it, we'll find a way to put it on public land, I mean, private land. That's not a problem, but I think the county, if they promote tourism and want to know the history of the county, it would be de minimis for the county to add it on to their pre-existing properties, it's going to be built in such a way that there's going to be virtually no maintenance. It's all going to be covered with tar and chip, and it's going to be a rock chimney, built appropriately, and it's not too high that even if you pulled it down, it would hurt somebody. It's going to be six, eight feet tall. And I'd like you to consider taking it, because I think it's something that the board supervisors should be involved in, or taking interest. It's not going to cost the county anything, except for point oh three acres to insure. And then you have a little, you know, control of what's done. If it's done on private property, then you have no control. But, that's up to you, gentlemen. Thank you for your service and your time.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else here to speak? Anyone else here to speak? I declare public comment closed. Thank you. Okay, the county's president supports?
As of the end of September, cap balance in our account is five hundred forty-five thousand minus five. That's compared to negative four hundred seventy-three thousand last year at the same time. Tax bills, tax bills mailed out two weeks ago, so we've started to see the inflow of tax revenues, which has helped tremendously. And, at this point, unless something that I have not forecasted happens, we will not be using the line of credit to pay this regular, or operational and budgeted expenses. The expenses for the year-to-date, overall, is at twenty-six percent, which is about right on target. And the details of all of that is on board docs, if anyone has any questions. So, in the tax bills this, this year, I put a flyer in to help people budget tax payments for next year. That's geared not to generate, it's not going to generate any additional revenue, we're talking about the same amount of revenue, it's just helping people that have trouble coming up with those monies all at once in December, to proportion that out over an eleven-month period. So, if you get any questions on that, please have, have people give me a call, come by CD, you know, set down people working out how much they can afford to put away for next year, so. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Brilliant.
We have a registrar here. I think I know the answer to this question, but we're in an election year, we're five weeks away from an election. We've spent twelve and a half percent of the budget so far in that, in that category. Is there going to be an uptick for the election, when bringing people onboard? Or, how, because there was a lot of discussion about funding in the, in the electoral board and the officials.
Are you asking if there's going to be an increase with the next?
Twenty-six percent of the way through here, we've spent about twelve and a half percent of the budget. I'm wondering if we open budgeted for that position, or for that line, or are, because we're about to have a presidential election, are we going to really see a lot of money spent here in the next five weeks?
Yes.
Do you want to, like, give your layup here?
Easy answer. Well, you know, we're going to have election official training, and then we have to pay the election officials, and because it's a presidential election, we have to have a minimum of six officials at each precinct, plus alternates, if there's something called the sick or whatever. So, that's going to be the big chunk. We've already, I believe, the bill for the ballots for presidentialists on your plate to sign up on today, and it was just under thirteen hundred dollars. So, and we've already, it's, it's a slow process, like, we're paying for the memory cards for voting equipment to be, you know, we sent some machines off to be fixed. So, it's been staggered over a period of time, so.
So, when we look at this in, say, December, we'll see quite a true one?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other question I had, I'm not sure who I direct this to, the county administrator, but for all the talk about tourism, and the need for additional monies to be spent in attracting people to come and shop in our shops and eat in our restaurants, we're only going to use nine and a half percent of our tourism budget, and we're right in the middle of a peak season. I just wonder, how, you know, how can we, best of that money we set aside in the middle of a, in the middle of a peak season, to draw more people in our county?
Well, there's been certain things that it's been allocated for, part of that is this link, so the bills just happen to come in and do, we've spent money on the farm tour, so that's been in place. The art tours coming up, we don't really support that, but the things that we noted for in the budget will be coming due and paid for. We're on schedule.
So, we'll see that increase as well.
Anyone else?
I have one more, Mr. Chairman, apologies. I can't find it here necessarily, but there's public official liability insurance in here at two hundred fifty-five percent budget. Is that really the additional insurance for fire and rescue that we voted on, or what is?
That's the VML insurance premium. We pay a small part of the premium in August and September, and then we pay the remainder in October. They like it to be done on an annual basis, one lump sum, but they spread it out for us because of our cash. So, that's the first installment. We'll have another significant payment next month. But that's the total bill for the year for VML, and for all insurance coverages.
I just wonder why that was so high from a percentage basis?
Right. We don't budget by month, we budget by year. So, there will be times where it will look like you're owed her, because you have a large lump sum coming in early.
Okay, so it's, all right. So, okay, so that'll spread out over the month?
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bye. County's panel?
Yes, sir, I'm looking for a motion, I'll say.
Dave, you want to make the motion?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded, may the county recount? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next, I have the appropriation for litigation case.
Can I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, as Debbie mentioned earlier, this was actually put on at request myself, and the county administrator, I have talked about it with you individually, as I'm allowed to do. I believe it's appropriate, as I pointed out already, there's a state law that allows it, it's already in effect, we just don't have money appropriated for that purpose. We should have enough money. We actually have a line item in my budget, it's county attorney for litigation. We have two thousand dollars in that account. The reason we do that is because we hardly ever get sued. There wasn't any need to put any money in that account, but we have an account for litigation expense. And the state law allows us, the problem is that you need to, because of the way we're getting sued, and you being sued individually, and the BZA members being sued individually, at least the chairman. In order to have money to defend those cases, we need to increase the amount in that account. The resolution I prepared is not to be voted on today, what you're going to do today is authorize us to advertise this for public hearing at your November meeting. And I do need to know from you today, an amount to put in the advertising, because it will advertise, this is what's called a supplemental appropriation. We'll advertise an amount, this will be a newspaper, you'll have a public hearing at your November meeting, and then you'll decide whether you want to do, whether you want to do it or not. I do need to point out a couple of things. We do have insurance. A lot of the times the county sued, or officials are sued, is covered by insurance. VML insurance is not covered FOIA suits. Therefore, they become a fertile ground for suing counties, municipalities, subparts of government, and individuals. That's where this leads us, because what happens here in this suit, the suit against, I'll call it the drag suit, it also happened when Mr. Connick sued the BZA and the chairman personally. Those people are not covered by insurance, and they don't have any counsel. I, as county attorney, don't represent them individually, I represent the body. This leaves them hanging out there with no attorney, and they're going to have to go into their own pockets to pay for an attorney. Now, you hear about, well, they could be found to be liable down the road. Maybe so, and maybe not. But to even have the right to a counsel, they would have to pay for that themselves. That's where these suits put pressure, that's how you bring one of these suits, that's your leverage. You sue these people individually, you get them scared, say, "I don't want to come up with a ten thousand dollar retention for an attorney, I can't afford it." You try to force a settlement of the case. In this case, I think it's important that we send a message, we're not going to go along with that tactic. There's going to be an adequate defense fund for these county employees that are sued individually, you're not going to be able to run roughshod over. And therefore, I recommend that this come on the agenda. Once again, you're not making a decision on it today, but I would like you to put an amount on this. I'm going to suggest for a hundred thousand dollars. I think that if you don't spend it, you've got it for next year. But you don't want to have to go back and do a supplemental appropriation. I don't know how many other lawsuits are going to be filed, we've had, we've had six lawsuits against individuals, this board, and the chairman of the BZA, the last two months. Individual complaints against them individually, requesting damages or fines against them individually, and that's, that's six people in the last two months. So, what's coming? I don't know, but I do know that our insurance is covering it, and I think these employees and officials, including yourselves, should have the benefit of this protection, so. I will ask you, gentlemen, to authorize me to advertise this for public hearing, and I'll ask you to give an amount, if you want your views on the advertising.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think Mr. Luke left a few key pieces of information out of this whole puzzle. The reason that there's two thousand dollars in the account for litigation is because normally the county attorney would try and represent the different bodies or whatever, but in this particular one, he's conflicted out because he has the potential to be called as a witness, so he can't actually be representative of the supervisors. That needs to be said, that's the reason for the funding, for the additional counsel. The lawsuit that was filed against the BZA member, she was, that was filed to stop an illegal, we call it, meeting from happening. And she called that meeting most likely on bad advice from legal counsel that she shouldn't have had. So, there's, there's several little key pieces of information, if you leave out part of it, it makes the whole look worse than it really is, or it actually implies it to be something totally different. So, while everybody that functions properly on their boards or appointed positions is covered by sovereign immunity, Mr. Luke's right, there's no real fund for anyone to have legal counsel, except for their own pocket on a FOIA problem. There's several key things that are left out there, the public doesn't notice, and a lot of misinformation, disinformation out there, and I think the district should be fully open with what's going on in this, this current transaction. We basically have a county attorney that we can't use for defense in this situation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to beg to differ with my counterpart. I think those thoughts on whether or not the county attorney's conflicted out, as well as his position at the BZA, are his opinions, and not necessarily those that would stand up when you, when you look at the code or at the court. I've consulted with the county attorney, and I have, I am satisfied that there are statutes, that there is law, that there is code. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not sure which the proper term is, that any, the county attorney is not conflicted out in this situation, and not on behalf of us as a board and we as individuals. So, depending on behalf of Mr. Frager, it's a different, maybe not necessarily the way it is. With respect, and, well, I just have one more point to make, and now you.
Point of order, it's requested, Mr. Chairman.
Your call, Mr. Chairman. Your call, sir. And then, with respect to this resolution, certainly it protects this board here, but I'm particularly focused on the impact that this could have in this community, to solicit individuals to volunteer or to run for office for other positions, and they may be exposed to lawsuits in which the county doesn't have their back, there is no legal defense fund for them. I don't know why anybody would run, would want to be appointed for the planning commission, or the water and sewer board, or even the library board, if they didn't know that this, this board had their backs when it came to having to consider lawsuits, whether considered frivolous or not. So, for that reason, I support this resolution. And you?
We interviewed, this board interviewed five different attorneys last Monday, and two of those attorneys told us that if an attorney could not represent a client where he, or she, had the potential of being a witness in the same case. So, I don't know, I mean, we had two, two attorneys tell us that, and it was not in relation to this, they didn't even know about this, as far as I know. And if you read the Virginia Association's rule, I don't have a particular rule in front of me, I can probably find it, but this thing, seems like the more use it, the better it works. But, the Virginia Association's Code of Ethics, ours, there.
Mr. Chairman? I do believe that, as well as on board docs here attached to the resolution for the legal defense fund, are a couple of, according to code, code of Virginia, sections that talk about providing legal fees and expenses for officers, as well as who can provide this, if I'm not mistaken.
It doesn't address that the individual that's currently has, has the potential of being a witness in the same case.
Mr. Chairman, could I comment on this? I don't want to get into an argument with Mr. Frager, but it's my license at risk.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've consulted with Virginia State Bar. It's not clear I'm going to be a witness in this case, and until it's clear that I'm going to be a witness, I do not have to withdraw from representing the board or the new members if you didn't make me to do so. This is a technique used to get an attorney out of a case.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
He's accusing me of something, but I'm just trying to warn this board there's a potential problem. He just made an accusation, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't see it as an accusation, I was afraid.
You didn't see it as a complaint, what to do about an employee earlier?
That's beside the point.
He said this was a technique used. This is me talking to this board and to the public. I have no technique, I have nothing else to say but what we were told last Monday by two different attorneys about the same type of situation. So I think that that needs to be retracted.
Well, neither one of those two attorneys wanted to look at ease while they were saying that either. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to advertise this resolution for public hearing at the amount of $100,000, up to $100,000.
I'll second that. I think it's important that we show support to all the county employees, whether they're hired in or voted in, and I think this is important. I think most counties in the state of Virginia have a similar fund that provide security as far as legal counsel for people that are potentially threatened. I'll second this motion.
Any more discussion?
Just briefly, I think the public needs to know that this most likely will either be a tax increase for next year to fund this, or we'll be using a line of credit right now. There's no funds available for it.
Mr. Chairman, this is simply for a public hearing, which the public can't make their opinions well known, and nobody's voting on anything right now.
I think all of the information is via this, Mr. Chairman.
Well, the public hearings, that'll get information. I have a motion on the floor, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we could have, we have a rule call on this. It's not absolutely necessary, but in light of the litigation that's going on, I'd appreciate a rule call.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Lozacki.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
And I'm also.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next time, the appropriations. Okay, next time, the appropriations.
This was included in the meeting last month. As we had talked earlier, we have used the expenditures that are allowed in our budget without having another public hearing. The radio purchase has taken us to that limit, so if we have any other expenditures for the remainder of the year, then we need to have a public hearing in order to do that. So again, this is not necessarily money spent, but just good preparation in case we do need to use it for the future. So we can decide whether we want to allocate these funds as they are, or whether we want to put them to another account. Again, we can move that money if it ends up that we don't meet the $200,000 for social services, but we need it in some other category, we can move it. But again, it's just protection that we have advertised, so we can add the motion that you just approved to this list, and advertise them all together, and have one consolidated public hearing. There was a comment earlier about the BZA council, that was just left on from last month. You can add or subtract to this list as you deem appropriate.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm very concerned about this line item, the number $200,000 for social services. I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but we should perhaps get a report to have social services on, you know, what exactly warrants the potential of going through a budget number like this. I realize that we're required by law most likely to have to fund this, and it's not optional, but I certainly would like to learn a little bit more, you know, about the trends in the root of the problem, especially since we're going to be teaming up for budget, 17, 18 budget. If social services feels that we've been underfunding this, we're going to have to tackle it anyway, it may be a good time to receive a presentation.
We can do a presentation. They have a budget of $1.2 million, and currently they've projected $800,000 for the year. But as you know, that is mandated, so if something does happen that we run over, then we would be required to fund it. And so, this is not an estimate, it's just in there as a precautionary measure. So if we get close to the end of the year, it would save us from having another public hearing again, if we do need to do it. So this is purely precautionary, because it is mandated.
A lot of this is, there is no predicting how much money will happen. I mean, for example, if two parents get thrown in jail tonight, and they got four kids, the county needs to take care of them. And there's no way of knowing, you know, how to predict that. So for that reason, money should be there, and hopefully unlike the event, but it's needed. I will say that the county has gone from taking care of, I think it was about 36 kids here about a year ago, it's down to about 28. And so, it's looking a little rosier than it did. It's expensive, some of them are $100,000 apiece, and some of them are, you know, just regular foster care, or some kind of, you know, psychological services. So hopefully, we won't need it, but it probably should be there, and in the event we did to, so do they, but we don't have any choice. They live in this county.
They're on board. They don't live in, have to live in the county, if I'm correct on that.
They have to be in.
If they just kind of fall into our lap, and it just happens.
Well, if there's a grandmother in the county, and the parents are in another county, and the kids end up moving, like I say, for whatever reason, there's a lot of drug problems out there. The parents sometimes are incapacitated as parents, and they might move in to a grandmother who lives around Hennepin County, and we're stuck. So it's a good idea to have it in there, and we can just keep our fingers crossed that we won't need it.
I do share, Mr. Frazier, his concern.
I would love to have more accountability.
We're 16% of the year.
Right.
You know, I'm asking for is just a venue report, agree for board, and we're doing our social services, there's, for all reasons, we discussed.
I'll make that motion.
And do you want that to be the 327,500 plus $100,000?
I think so, yes.
But we don't have to have the BZA council number in there.
No, we don't. So we can just reduce it by five, or we can move it to somewhere else.
So this is going to go to a public hearing next month?
Right, it'll be, right, the whole thing will be at the November Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Old business. Blue Ridge is loyal to me.
Oh, we have one more thing. I'm sorry, we have a school, we talked earlier today about an appropriation for a grant. So we have the Virginia Department of Education safety grant in the matter, in the amount of $28,816.
I commend the attorney.
I think it's an attachment to the appropriation.
Yeah, it's a tax form. It's part of the appropriations.
I'll also make that motion. I commend the schools for going out and funding these grants, and getting the money to go forward with the educational system we have, I really commend them, and this is flow-through money, so.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, nay. Now, Blue Ridge.
I think we have agents together, don't we?
That is, that was a request that came in in January, that fell between Mr. Parky and I, so we can vote on that at the November meeting once the amount's been approved. Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Fletcher?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. I've had the pleasure of meeting many in the room. For those who don't know me, my name is Mrs. Sutton, and I am the great-great-granddaughter of someone who was removed when Shenandoah National Park was created. I am pleased to be one of many volunteers serving on the Blue Ridge Heritage Project throughout Hennepin, I'm going to put this bunch up here. The Blue Ridge Heritage Project is a nonprofit that was created to honor the memories of those families that were displaced when the park was created. The word displaced, of course, represents several different situations that happened. Some folks willingly sold their property, knowing that was coming to fruition. Others saw their land condemned, like my great-great-grandfather, and they were forced to move. So what we've been doing here in the county is we have a committee, we've been working with one of eight committees, there were eight counties that were impacted when the park was created, and there is a committee in each of the eight counties currently working to have this memorial built to honor these families. This is an all-volunteer-led project, and we are working again to have a memorial built in each of the counties. And the stone chimney is actually the shape of the memorial, and the significance of that is because oftentimes the homes were burned, so that folks did not return to those properties, and the stone chimney is the only thing that remained. And if you've been hiking out in the park, it's, you know, more than 1.3 million visitors to the park every year, who enjoy it. Often folks say, well, you know, why are there, you know, fruit trees here, or why is there a stone chimney here? Well, it's because people used to live here, that's why. So our original plan, when we started meeting, we've only had, I believe, four meetings so far, our original plan was to build a temporary memorial at the visitor's center. And when I came before you all several months ago, you granted permission for us to place that temporary memorial at the visitor's center, thank you very much. And we were hoping to do that in October, November, and then we're going to work towards fundraising to build a permanent stone chimney memorial within the next two years. We're happy to have a revised plan, which is why we're here today, to build a permanent memorial on the property of Thornton River Orchard in Sperryville, and we're hoping to have this done by November. And today, we are here to ask the county to consider a gift, that of the memorial and the land on which the memorial is. We are able to move forward, or hopefully move forward with this at this time, due to the generosity of two folks who live here in the county. Mr. Bill Fletcher has offered to fully fund the construction of the memorial, and Russell Jenkins, who is the owner of the Thornton River Orchard, has offered to donate the land that the memorial will be built on. So for those not familiar, or just to share with you where on the property we're envisioning this going, of course Thornton River Orchard is located on the western edge of Sperryville, on the north side of Route 211, just before you enter Shenandoah National Park. So if you're heading west on Route 211, it goes on the right side of the road, and it's directly across from the Hearthstone School. The specific area on the orchard property that we're talking about for the memorial is just off of Route 211 at the western end of the orchard's existing gravel parking lot. In this photo here, it's circled in red. This particular location, this area in general, is really desirable for lots of reasons. We believe that the memorial will catch the eye of the folks going into the park. We know that Route 211, of course, serves as the main thoroughfare to get folks in there. The area also happens to be an area of historical importance. This particular piece of land is close to a former CCC camp, the old Pullen Post Office, one of several Clark family cemeteries, and the Beach Spring Regular Baptist Church. So what we envision for the memorial, the design would be very similar to what has been done in several other counties. We have the stone chimney again, which is, you know, it's significant because the stone chimneys were the only things that remained after the homes were burned. The entire footprint of this area is very small, and we'll let Mr. Fletcher speak to that in just a moment. You'll notice that there's a very small amount of landscaping there around the chimney itself, and there's three wooden benches, because we want folks to have a comfortable place to sit if they would like to reflect and honor those families. The stone, of course, being used on the chimney would be local rap hanning stone. We're trying to also work with a local rap hanning stone mason, who was descended from someone who was displaced from the park. And the stone, of course, is a very durable material, as are all the materials that we envision using. So just to kind of summarize, you know, the, some of the details about the project, the memorial would be built on land that has an existing entrance from Route 211. There is an existing gravel parking lot with parking spaces. We do not envision any signage being needed, because we believe through some grassroots promotions and promoting within the families and the volunteers that we have, it's the word of mouth, because, you know, if you're a lover of Shenandoah National Park, the word spreads fast. So we don't see any signage, and also no need for any electricity to be outside either. In terms of accepting the gift, if the county should choose to do so, of course, the county responsibilities would become maintaining the very small site on which the memorial will sit. Minimal maintenance required in terms of lawn mowing and landscaping. All of the memorials actually have been designed in that same manner, and I believe five, we would leave, if the gift is accepted, six. All the six memorials that have been built so far would be on public property, on the county-owned property. And then just maintaining the memorial in general, again, very durable and long-lasting materials are being used to construct it. We do have a site plan available, and the contract for land conveyance, I believe, is available for review as well, so we would just ask the county to consider accepting this gift. Our timeline, obviously, we're here today, asking the county to consider this idea. Over the next month, if there are concerns or questions, we would love to work with the county to address those and to move forward with this. And hopefully, in early November, then finalize the transfer of land and the memorial to the county, and of course, have a dedication ceremony to which everyone is affected. Thank you.
I think you have the plat. We haven't done a contract, because we didn't know how you wanted to do it. Mike Brown's going to do the contract, because I'm giving the money, I think, through the Hampton Foundation, which is a private foundation. We'd like to give it to the county, so the work that's done on it is tax deductible at the end. I don't know if the Blue Ridge Project would accept the, accept, build the land on private, build the monument on private land. I think the total amount of area enclosed is .03156, or some number like that, I don't hit the plaque in front of me. And I don't hit my glass, but I think it's pretty close. 0367, I'm sorry, Mr. Luke, you're of course correct. Russell's going to cover it all with millings. We're digging it now. We're going to put it up. I'd rather have the county involved for a variety of reasons. But I think it's something important. When the park took the land from the citizens of Rappahannock County, I think it destroyed a great amount of our culture that was great. I mean, Dad told me stories about people still speaking Old English up there, and the names, and I'm fortunate enough to be in age that I knew a lot of the locals that had been expatriated by the park. And it's a part of our history that should be known and more recognized. And I'd hope the county would like to be involved. I think involvement is very de minimis. Russell lived originally from the county, but a lot of his people are from here, he's got a little business. He's got parking spaces all the way up to the site where the memorial would be, it's a safe place, he's going to buy it in the entrance. And Mr. and our group are having a hard time getting up the money, and we're developing their focus. their focus on that. Wanted to spend something like $750 at the visitor's center. And I said, this place is a quarter mile from the entrance to the park. Uh, I wanna, I thought about, I read about it and I thought about it and went and talked to Russell and he said, hell yeah. And he said, well, what are you gonna do, Bill? And I said, well, Russell, if you, if you'll give them the land, I'll put up the money. And I'm saying fair. Uh, but if there are any questions, I'm glad to try. I'd like to know how you'd like the title. Russell said if the county ever didn't want it, he wanted it back. And the only thing I think he would want is to make sure this grant to the county, if you accept it, doesn't affect any of his division rights. And I don't see why it would, but there's so much drawl and such a state of flux now. Uh, our gunshot because of various things. I don't wanna put you all in trouble. If you don't wanna take it, we'll figure something else out. You got any questions? I'm glad to try to answer them, but it is a good location.
So you're, on your model, the only expense to the county would be mowing the grass?
I don't think there's gonna be any grass, Chris. I mean, but I, I think the thing Russell doesn't want and I wouldn't want, if a bunch of people go up there and he ain't around and one of them gets hurt or something on this 1,600 square feet, he don't wanna be paying the liability insurance for something that's benefiting the county at large. He's paying, he's gonna pay the insurance on the parking lot and all that because he's already got it. Uh, but I don't, I don't see whether there's gonna be any expense to the county over, uh, most would be hundred dollars or some, I mean, we're writing a different additional policy. How many acres is in the park out here if you all, you know, the place where they play tennis and they have parties and all? How many acres is that?
I would guess five acres. You mean out here across the highway?
Yeah, this is forty by forty. That's sixteen, that's as big as from over there to over here, babe. I, I don't see it's a, and I think it'll engender enough business for the county that it'll fly away that.
So, uh, we're gonna build a chimney there, right?
Yeah, right on that, right, right, right little spot here.
And if we move it over to the visitor's center, they would take that chimney down and build it over there to the visitor's center, is that?
Well, I don't know what you would do with it. I don't think you all are gonna...
We would hope this is a permanent location.
Well, what I'm wondering is if we, if we went to trouble, if y'all went to trouble building it there, why wouldn't we save it?
Yes, that's, that's what we're proposing, yes.
And not worry about the visitor's center?
That's correct. Yes, correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I might. I, uh, I was driving through Cricklinsville before I ever heard of this project and I, uh, was impressed and, uh, it caught my eye and it's a well-done monument there and I think it will be a well-done monument here. Um, I don't think it's actually even a better location here because it's on 211. I think 211 probably is a little bit more traffic than 670 down in Cricklinsville except for Apple Fest and, uh, Spring Bluegrass Festival. But, um, also I do have a concern seeing, uh, Russell has a gate there at the entrance and typically when, uh, it's not apple season, he, it's sometimes closed. Uh, is there, I was, I was, uh, how's that gonna work out? You know, he closes that gate to protect his property.
Well, he's rented it to Clark now and if you'd like to have that answer, I'll ask Clark, but I think he's, Clark's doing a pretty good business there. I think he's gonna keep it open most of the time. And, uh, there's another entrance we're exploring from the highway department. There was an entrance there that has room for one or two cars off the road. Well, we haven't gotten the final answer back from them, but, you know, I, Russell has a fair amount of machinery and all that back there. I don't think he's gonna leave that door, that gate open at night.
Well, I'm not asking...
But I think it's open ninety percent of the time.
But then again, at least he used to be, much of his business was the apple season and fall and from summertime it was closed. So I was wondering if there was a discussion or provision made that if you can have a monument there that, you know, maybe that gate is someplace else that protects his equipment?
Well, we certainly wouldn't mind the county spending any money that, like, on this project. However, now, I, the way I feel about it, I, I've offered $5,000 to raise it to you all. Russell's offering to give the land, uh, but we aren't gonna do, in the winter, when it's snowing, we're not gonna open it. It's a place of business, they're paying for all the parking. You've got enough to put thirty cars up there, I think, and he's planning on expanding and expanding the entrance, which is gonna cost more than ten or fifteen thousand dollars for an average citizen. Uh, I think, and I think it's gonna be open ninety percent of the time. I don't think it's gonna be open a hundred percent.
He did, he did express to me that he understood the importance of keeping the gate open much more possible, so, but it's a valid question.
My only other question is, is, has the county looked at what the, uh, cost would be to the county as far as the investment or was that just being negligible or do we know what, uh?
We, we know we do have liability coverage that we have to, we, we listed, coverage is on listed assets, so we'd have to, you know, inform our insurance carrier, which usually be in that, about it and see what it would cost. I don't imagine it's gonna cost that much, uh, if we look at the description I'm hearing here about it. But I do need to say one thing before you start asking a lot of questions about this. My wife, who's sitting right here, my lovely wife, represented Russell Jenkins, I think we bought this property, and my son is now representing Russell's son on another thing. So I wanna make sure you understand, I'm gonna disclose that. I don't, I don't have any personal interest in this one way or the other, but I don't want it somehow to come out, well, somehow I cut a special deal for Russell Jenkins or Mr. Clark because of some prior relationship or the relationship my son now has in another business transaction. So I'm disclosing that. If you're fine with it, then, then what I'll do is I'll get with probably Mr. Brown and Mr. Fletcher here. There's various ways to structure this deal if you wanna do it. Uh, I, I have the same concerns, but what are gonna be the restrictions? You know, could we do it as a lease, you know, a long-term lease, a dollar a year or something like that? Do we not worry about the transfer of property? Yeah, so anyway, there's several, there's several ways of doing that, but I wanted to put that out there before you say, Peter, go ahead and, you know, do what needs to be done. So that's my disclosure.
All right, I, one more question. Um, even though it's durable, uh, material, stone and mortar, quite often you do sometime at some point need to re-point and may have some, um, need of more substantial maintenance, say the log benches. Is there gonna be any part of the nonprofit, a, a reserve fund for these kind of things for the 67?
No, I'm not gonna continue to make a fund in perpetuity on a monument in Rapahaonic County for the benefit of other people.
Well, I would have asked you, Bill, personally, but I, the nonprofit for these monuments, if they were, was gonna be a funded, you know, maybe...
I, I can't tell you after I pass on how long the Hampton Foundation will survive. I would imagine not long.
From the county's perspective, uh, we have great interest in continuing our work, continuing fundraising. We had only just started fundraising, uh, when Mr. Fletcher's offer came to us and Mr. Jenkins' offer came to us. Um, I was always in belief, I always believed that we would raise the money one way or the other. Um, there's a lot of people who believe in this and, uh, to maintain the memorial. Uh, I mean, you know, obviously it's a gift to the county. Uh, I believe in the other counties, um, you know, the counties have fully assumed that responsibility, um, you know, but we're, we're open to discussing, you know, you know. Ideally, we would want the county to accept the gift, then, well, obviously.
If, if I could, the, uh, the Confederate Memorial, like most of them around the state, the funding funds were donated by the United States Confederacy and there's been prior groups that have donated to the maintenance and that people have a sense of it. And I think, I think the county endorsing this project would, would go a long way toward a long-range, long-range fundraising success as well.
Ms. Pierce came out and offered to give some money early to this project. I think any native of Rapahaonic would be glad to contribute something to this project. I think if it goes bad and it's publicized, I think it'll be fixed in thirty minutes. That's the way people in Rapahaonic are. But I remember also, I'll tell you this story, offered to make a donation of five thousand to a group one time and he said, no, we need ten. You know what my response was? You get nothing. Uh, but I'm just, uh, I think you'd get, I think you'd get in the monument here with the least trouble for the citizens of Rapahaonic County that you'll ever get. And I think it'll be a benefit historically into every individual in Rapahaonic. It's a fascinating story, what the park did, how they did it. Uh, my father always told me this story about Cliff Murray had a thousand acres of land, or his great-granddad had a thousand acres of land up there and they gave him less than the whole tract than he'd been offered for fifty acres of timber up there. I mean, you talk about reparations, the citizens of Rapahaonic should get reparations from the federal government for this before a lot of other things they're talking about. But that aside, I think that as a citizen, I think this is a work law project. I think the county should do it. I'm glad to work with Mr. Luke and Misty in any way that's to the advantage and I think the, uh, you know, if I could put it on my land, I would. But I don't think my land's the right place. I think this is the best location and we're damn fortunate to have Russell Jenkins offered to give you the land because I think it's important that this be known and shown to the citizens of Rapahaonic and elsewhere.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question, actually, for Mr. Fletcher, maybe, and Misty. Um, at times here, I feel like I've been sitting in a planning commission meeting because we've got the site plan and we've got the photos and we're talking about access and parking and maintenance. Um, is there, Ms. Fraser, probably a question for you. Is there a reason that this wouldn't first go before the planning commission to kind of look at some of these rights of way or, uh, access or title or any of, any of these other, uh, issues that the planning commission does a good job of taking up or are we just gonna feel comfortable enough to be able to approve this without that step? I'm just, I'm just asking.
Well, you know, the only thing I was saying, can you be honest with you? I thought...
You're wondering why I'm looking at gift horses in the mouth, right?
Yeah, I mean, I know, I should have started by saying that... I was spending more time dealing with BS.
Yeah, but you, but you had, but you had, Bill, you had said, we, you guys may not wanna go down this road because you're getting a whole lot of grief for, you know, getting sued, da-da-da, or however you put it. I guarantee you we're getting more grief over what's going on in Zonka Arena.
I'm asking anything special. I've been to Ms. Kaiser and said, Ms. Kaiser, if we need something from your office, we're glad people. And I've been to Richie Burke.
Do we need it?
I said, Richie Burke, this is what we're planning, do we need to build a permit? He originally said, no, you don't need a building permit, Bill. And I don't think we need one, but we're gonna get one just so nobody can say anything was done wrong. The county is ahead of it. If you're doing a remodel on the courthouse, you don't have to go to the planning commission to get permission to change courthouse, do you?
I'm just looking at the, I'm simply looking at access.
First, first of all, it could be because it's such a minimal in size and scope, it could be, uh, I believe this has, and I, she looked at first, I agree with her, it could be, come out here, I think it's one seventy, I forget the number, it's, it's a monument. So it would be similar to, like you said, uh, telephone pedestals that you see on the corners of several intersections, it's pretty similar. So it, you wouldn't have a lot of zoning issues with it to start with. So certainly if the county accepts this gift, we can waive any and all of those requirements because it's now our property. But it's, it's very, it's just so minimal in scope that it, I don't, I don't see why we'd tie it up with red tape, go through the planning commission and some other meeting of this order and we simply accept it. We get a building permit, which is, really wouldn't be required then either, but we'd do that just for safety sake that it's, it gets an inspection while it's being constructed. We'd, we'd probably have three, three inspections. You'd have footers and then the chimney itself before it's been near to the stone and then the, the final.
What about V-DOT, though? What, I mean, I...
Well, it's, it's out of the V-DOT right of it. And that's, that's one reason for preserving it because if the county owns it, then you don't have a chance to session down the road in the Jenkins family to worry about it. And you can, and you also, you know, V-DOT would have an extra component in this county ultimately. So I, it's a, I think it's a win-win. It, it does so many things that are good that, you know...
What does, it, it, I mean, I commend, I commend the whole concept. I commend Mr. Fletcher and his generosity. Uh, you know, they got pre-exposed to visitor centers because we're already doing business there as a county and we got a lot of visitors going there that are coming to the county for the first time and they can see it there. Um, but if the commission, if your commission feels that stronger site is, you know, the Jenkins site...
We did discuss, I mean, we, we definitely discussed, uh, the visitor's center and there is some traffic there, but obviously the heavier traffic in terms of, you know, slower speed limit, um, more visibility and again, historical importance of the area is definitely in that western edge of Sperryville, so...
It sounds like an appropriate spot that people are going to the, to the park and they're gonna pass it if they're going to the park, if it relates to the park. I, by the way, went to Sperryville for lunch, before and after, and as I pulled up, so did the car from Minnesota and this young couple got out and they had driven non-stop since last night from Minnesota, had them to the park, a camp, a camp for three days. So, you know, and they bought lunch there. So anyway, you know, somebody else mentioned the park as being a draw for the county. So it sounds like a great idea. The only thing I haven't been up to check out the site, when they and, and Mike borrowed the gate. So if somebody's driving by and they see it and they wanna pull over, they'll just pull off the side of the road and get out and look at it, is that the deal?
No, they would need to pull into Russell's property and then park, that's correct.
So if they happen to notice it as they already pass the gate, they'd have to turn around and come back, yeah?
So our goal, um, I do social media and...
And there's no way to make it where they would just pull off and...
I think that's something you're gonna decide how to deal with down.
The thing's very scary, that elevation.
It is, I haven't been up there.
I don't see, for safety...
And there is a great place to turn around about thirty, forty feet away and, uh, there probably will be some signage sometime, but we, we don't wanna put up signs if it isn't needed.
Right, right, exactly.
And I believe through social media and the newsletter system that we're going to be implementing, uh, and again tapping into some of these key offices that we believe we're utilizing and, and going to this memorial site anyway, we can help educate folks about where it is, we're determined, we're a safely parked and that sort of thing. Because we want it to be a safe experience for everyone.
And if it takes off, there's also been some discussion about an expansion of this area and maybe put a pavilion there. But that's, I think that's years away and we'd have to come back to the county at that time and do that.
That's a whole separate discussion for the, for Rapahaonic, we need that first.
But it's ironic that Mr. Pierce would bring up meetings, folks from Minnesota. I was at Hackett's store just a week or so ago and a gentleman pulled in there and was looking at those Civil Trail signs. And he was from Vermont. So, you know, he, he, he had, he hadn't planned out he was gonna stop there at Hackett's, he was gonna go up to the avenue, he was gonna go down to Nibbys Corner, then he was gonna go, you know, Little Washington and, and I, I kinda foresee, see something like this happening, some sort of a tour that could benefit the, the eight counties that have participated in this memorial project.
It would just be another driving tour, is that right?
And that is correct. That's actually one of the initiatives of the Blue Ridge Heritage Project, one of the directors is helping that, is, uh, making a driving tour of all eight county memorials so that folks could really get out and experience those areas and, you know, the localities and really get to know more about the specific families who lived in those areas when they were displaced.
Sounds like a good idea. I think if we had a consensus to have Mr. Fletcher and...
Sounds like a good idea. I think if we had a consensus to have Mr. Fletcher and have the county administrator work on, basically, something that we could approve in, or not in November, might be a good idea.
Well, we're probably gonna build it between now and November, I hope. So, then y'all be able to see it. If you don't want it, we'll figure another way to do it. We're gonna build it.
Just out of curiosity, how many people here have family come out of the park?
How many people don't know that they have family that came out of the park? Yeah, I mean, the hands that don't raise, or the stories it really tells, because this was not discussed in generations after people left the park. People didn't talk about it. It was a very tragic event.
That's absolutely.
They took them out, burned their house right after.
They didn't talk about it.
No. I mean, we have a member of our vault, of our community-
Just build, name it, come back.
They're still.
Just build it, and they will come.
We believe so.
I don't know, but I, I think it's something, it's kind of like Rappahannock's Holocaust museum, Chris.
Are we gonna kind of build it, beg for forgiveness if something goes awry here?
Well, we'll look at it for the next thirty days.
But he's gonna build it in the next thirty days?
Are you really gonna build it in the next thirty days?
Yeah. I am. We've turned phones with it.
Well, I just say, on behalf of Blue Ridge Heritage Project, I respect where Mr. Fletcher is coming from, but I want this to be a win-win for the county. I'm not looking to force anything on anyone that anyone's not comfortable with. And I understand that your offer comes with an expiration date, and I can appreciate that. But I still believe that we would be able to raise the money to build the memorial where we want it to be, if this particular deal should not come into effect.
Bill, if you don't, if you don't get the authority to build it in the next thirty days, are you pulling the phones? Is that your test?
Yes.
Well, wait, wait. I mean, I don't know why you couldn't build this monument while it's still part of Mr. Jenkins' property. The issue is just whether the board's gonna take title.
Correct.
I mean, I can build it. I, I, I'm trying to give it to the county and be a nice citizen. But if y'all don't want to be nice citizens, we won't. We're gonna do it.
Build it first, and then give it to us.
I really think it's a good idea, and I appreciate Bill's generous offer. And I think we should go forward with it. I suppose there are a few legal details we need to look at. And I'm not sure what they are, but.
If you want me to continue with this, it's by my disclosure, what I need to do is deal with Bill and Mike Brown. Because arson legally, Bill knows, if you deed this at county, we have to sign off on the title. We gotta do the title, make sure we've got the proper signatures on the deed. I think this, somewhere else, it's maybe in an LLC or something. So, I mean, you have all those things that's gotta be worked out. I'm not saying it can't be, but you've gotta do that. And then, if we do take title, I've gotta sign off on it, and you've gotta sign, you've gotta accept it. So, so, those gotta be worked out. But, you know, I think it can be worked out. It's not, it's not a legal impossibility.
And the other problem I've got out of this foundation, I have to give away certain funds, certain funds per year, I get penalized. I've started doing this in August, but, and I've got people come to me about two or three other real work law projects. So, if the county doesn't want it, or there's any problem, I'm gonna put the funds somewhere else. I'd like to make it easier for everybody, but if, you know, if y'all can't work it out, that's fine. I got plenty of people that want my money.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a motion if the board accept this gift, and that we instruct Ms. Kaiser and Mr. Luke to work with Blue Ridge Heritage Committee, and Mr. Fletcher, and Mr. Brown as to the transition of the title and property.
That's the best motion I've had all day. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Four to one. Congratulations.
Thank you all for your time, before seeing into negotiations here, though.
Next item is the finding of ownership.
As normally-
Thank you all. Thank you for your power, you, Bill.
We already do the finance, we provide a finance committee report, and we had taken this over. And we discussed policies. And as mentioned earlier, we talked about bulk heifer being a good standard for us to look at. And that was under the treasurer's report. Ms. Nick talked about some state audit findings and adjustments. We talked about the additional funding required, which we addressed today. We talked about the bond council update. There was discussion about a delinquent tax vendor, the pros and cons of obtaining a vendor to collect delinquent taxes, that we would have to handpick the accounts that they would maintain in order to ensure a return on investment. The treasurer has two companies that she's looking at to provide information back to us. And then, Mr. Fraser discussed the consideration of expanding the finance committee membership. And our next meeting is October the tenth in the act, right?
I believe it was a consensus of that committee that, that we recommended this body that we would take a good look at. And the board had discussed that as well back on the seventh, that we were gonna discuss it on the nineteenth. But, of course, the nineteenth was a very full agenda. We didn't get that far. But I, I think it's still very important that we discuss that as a, as a board, of the expansion of the finance committee, not only in size, but in scope as well.
And I apologize, I forgot to put it on the agenda, Mr. Fraser.
I don't know, that we would have helped you out if you had. I mean, it would have been, it might have been this time. There was still a lot of, like, people getting into it. But I think it's still very important that the board looked at. Ms. Hicks and Patty Robbin, we have some, some private individuals that we could tap to their experience. So, if we could maybe put that on the agenda to fully discuss next month.
Maybe while we're doing that, even though I'm not a member of the finance committee, I see that I had suggested discussing the pros and cons of obtaining a vendor to collect the link with taxes. Ask that be put on the agenda as well for discussion. And coordinated with treasurer's office, we have approximately a million dollars in uncollected taxes in this county. And we're gonna be talking about increasing everybody's taxes around here. I think we ought to make a pretty better effort to collect those that may, may be delinquent. Warren County recently hired a firm, and they just pay them a percentage of what they collect to go out and look for, look for delinquent taxes. So, that's a model we want, we want to look at. It cost us anything in turn. I don't think we send tax bills out, we'd set a tax rate for next year without focusing on the issue of delinquent taxes. So, if we could put that on the agenda for November as well, I would appreciate that. And I don't know if anybody in the finance committee wants to comment on what their conversations were along those lines.
Well, we discussed with Ms. Nick about that, and I think we, I think it is to have her comment if she wanted to, but, I think the firms that do this charge about twenty percent. And, again, going back to what we had a discussion with some of those county current candidates, one of them had mentioned that the court seemed to have a low opinion of the county tacking on litigation charges, whereas these firms are allowed to do it and that's just problematic for them. So, I do think we need to look at it.
Yeah, it seems like we could have done this longer. All right, anything else? Next item, fire and rescue services.
I wanted to make the board aware that Mr. Luke had started reviewing this document that was presented to him. Unfortunately, some other things have come up, and he's not been able to pursue that any further, but we are hoping that it will be on the November agenda.
Okay. And Malanis Service Card?
Mr. Chairman, this is on my request. You may recall, by the committee's at the board, we agreed with three companies, Cassius, Chester, Gap, and Spirit Hill, that if they signed up, turn agreement with us, that we would continue our ambulance cost recovery program for them. That's what this resolution does, is a resolution, or it is an amendment. So, all you're gonna do today is vote to have a public hearing on this, and hopefully adopt it at your November meeting. As, as things stand now, there's only three companies that have notified the county that they want to stay under the county's billing system. This agreement allows that. It also allows us to charge, if we run another county, then we have a mutual aid agreement that allows us to charge their citizens who are running in their county. We, we can charge that under this agreement. And that's because Chester Gap runs a lot of calls in Warren County. And we've been negotiating with Warren County. And I think that agreement is pretty close to being finalized. They'll have to come back to mutual final approval as a mutual aid agreement. The one thing I did put in here, the safety valve, it says that the county of Rappahannock shall have the right by resolution to add or remove an organization from our list stated above. So, if another company decided they, they wanted to join in and come in under our plan, then all it would take would be a resolution by this board for them to come in. Conversely, if one of the three companies that are listed here decided they wanted to go their own separate way or whatever, then by resolution, you could, you could remove them. But these will be the companies that our billing agent will be authorized to bill for under our Medicaid and under our Medicare number. And I would say, we're down to three. They've all signed agreements, agreeing to this. And you've ratified those agreements at your last meeting. So, I'd ask that you authorize us to advertise for your November meeting for adoption.
Would the mutual aid agreement, the jurisdictions have to go through the public hearing process as well?
Mutual aid agreement, no, we don't.
Because if we adopt this, we'll be back to where we are currently with, with, you know, the one that we don't have mutual aid agreements with anybody, that, that's not that good.
Mutual aid agreements do not require public hearing. It's just a bridge between, this has to be two jurisdictions.
Question, where do we stand with the county's, you know, best cost recovery vendor? Are we still working, are we still working Mars?
We are still working with Mars. There's limited billing due to problems. A lot of them are slowing down their billing, and we need to finalize the contract with the new vendor. So, that will likely be on the November agenda as well.
The contract with the new vendor on the November agenda?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion unless there's any more discussion to pass this ordinance. I think all three companies have requested this of the county, and this will move forward our, our fire and rescue.
I'll second that.
If I could just go ahead, this, this is not for you, the day to be passed. This is only for the advertised republic, a public hearing, because it is an ordinance to the county, because we have that public hearing on. So, this is just for you to give us authority to advertise this. You'll have a public hearing at your November meeting, and hopefully pass it down.
Well, maybe correction, let's put this out for a public meeting.
That's just a consensus, right?
Yeah, I don't need a, a, I just need to make sure I've got authority to do it.
Does any of us disagree?
I agree.
I agree.
I just have a problem. If we don't have mutual aid agreements, then if they're running calls, it can still, with, with that money, which.
They could still have a public comment, though.
Right.
Bond counsel, radio program, finding, Mr. Luke, again. Gentlemen, you recall we had bond counsel come to meet with us. A gentleman from Hunter Williams came and met with us. This has to do with the financing of the radio system. We kind of put him on hold while we explored whether Faukeer County would have let us go into their borrowing, become a joint borrowing. They've, now, we've, I think Debbie got word from their county administrator either today or yesterday that they're, they're not gonna do that. So, that puts us back in looking at our own financing. On the agenda is the, is the letter of engagement, we call it, in law, whereby we would engage Hunter Williams and specifically Mr. Culp to advise us as to the best way to finance this system. He's agreed to not exceed thirty-five hundred dollars in legal fees on this end of the transaction. You've already appropriated that money. That money was appropriated about two months ago, and when we did another supplemental appropriation. So, the money, the money's been appropriated. I do think you're gonna need bond counsel, whether you go to lease purchase, through the junior resources authority, or you unbond, with, you know, I don't know if you want to do that, because that's roughly the financing. So, you're probably gonna get in either lease purchase deal, or you're gonna go through the state bond group. But either way, you're gonna need an attorney to sign off on these things as we go along. So, he's been very patient, you know, he's not pressing us for anything on. I said, you know, we wanted to wait here from Faukeer before we did anything. But, and by the way, you only pay him as you need him. And so, it's not like we're gonna write a check for thirty-five hundred dollars. He charges you by the hour. I think it's about three hundred dollars an hour. If you don't, if you don't need him, or willing to need him for a limited amount, you don't spend the thirty-five hundred. But this would put thirty-five hundred essentially in a bond of void in purpose.
Well, it seems to make, seems to make sense. I'll make the res, I'll, I'll make the motion, if that's what we need, to move forward with bond counsel. I'll second.
Have a vote in the second. This is roll the ball.
Yeah, I'd like to roll on this, because it does involve spending your public.
Right. Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Levin.
Aye.
Mr. Levin.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Aye, also. Next item, zoning work issues and regulations. Glad you covered a lot. Is that Z-Boys?
That's me. I know that this is difficult to see up on the screen. I have some copies here, if anyone would like them, you know, versus trying to read the screen. Okay, this is a document that I put together along with Mr. Richie Burke. And as you know, there has been a lot of conversation about some of the zoning ordinances and issues with some buildings within the county. And Mr. Burke and I felt that we needed to get some clarification from the board. Whether you agree with the interpretation or not, it has been standing for the past twenty-seven to thirty years. And it's been our intent to continue to move forward with what's been taking place. We have not felt that it was appropriate for us to change an interpretation. That's not been our purview, that we report to the board, and we need to do what it is that you want us to do. So, we put together this spreadsheet with some questions that we had. And then, we were very fortunate to have met with the planning commission on Friday. And they provided us with their opinion as to what they thought was appropriate. So, the idea today is to go through this, and you may want to think about things- So the idea today is to go through this and you may want to think about things. You may want to add some additional clarification and you may be happy with it the way it is. So whatever your desire is, Mr. Luke and I can move forward with that. But our goal is to come to a resolution sooner than later so that we can move forward and make sure that we're doing what it is that the board wants, wants us to do. So with that, number four is where it starts on 70 dash 71. It says use limitations. The current language is no accessory structure shall be occupied or utilized unless the principal structure to which it is an accessory is occupied or utilized. What we're doing right now is that accessory structures are allowed to be built prior to the principal structures or without any principal structure. And we discussed that in the committee. The intent was originally to prevent folks from building a garage and potentially living there. But when we talked about it in the planning commission, it was thought that that really has not caused a problem, that people, you know, can live in their garage or apartments and let it be known that they plan on building a house later. So the PC recommendation was to remove D and to replace it with E to now allow what we have been doing in the past.
Sounds good.
Any thoughts, Mr. Frasier, over there? Do you have anything else to add?
I think, excuse me, that's in the consensus.
So if we remove D, which is use limitations, point 300 D says you shall comply with maximum height regulations applicable to the zoning district in which they're located. Is that also included in E or are we removing?
No, we would just move just the paragraph on here and replace it with the paragraph on here, not the whole subsection. Just exactly what's on this document. So everything else would remain the same. It's just that we would allow accessory structures, which we have been doing. So it would just say accessory structures are allowed. Everything else would remain.
Do you need a background man? Could it help?
I guess it makes sense. Do you want background?
Let's move on to the next item and we can come back if you have questions. Number six, 170 dash 137A zoning permit. This has permit required. No principal or accessory structure or use permissible by rights shall be constructed. And shall be constructed is the primary words there to note. And shall be constructed was what has been viewed in the past as new construction. So if you had a new construction, you came in, you got a zoning permit and then you got a building permit. But if it was not new construction, you know, it was remodeling, it was even an add-on, then a building permit was required, but a zoning permit was not. The concern with doing this is certainly no problem to do it. The problem is, is that this will add some lead time to folks coming in because it will require more zoning permits to go through my office. So it will take some time to do that. But we're still at a shorter lead time than a lot of the other larger counties. But it will funnel through on person. The planning commission recommendation was to change that and to say that if you have improvements or disturbances of the footprint, that means if it goes up or it goes out, that triggers a zoning permit. We would need to define a site improvement and no permit would be required on internal modeling. So that would be a change to require additional remodeling to have permits that have not been required in the past.
So a deck would require another zoning permit?
Right. And the idea behind that is, is that we're looking for setbacks and we're looking for height restrictions. So people that are building a garage or building a deck could get too close to their property line and create problems.
If I could, the zoning ordinance requires this. It just hasn't been happened.
Yeah, I know that. But if it goes up, it doesn't necessarily change the footprint.
Somebody's got to look at the height requirements.
So is that part of the definition of footprint is height? Because when I think of footprint, I just think of the four walls.
Well, yeah, footprint would be four walls, but if it's going up, then it's a height requirement that you have to look at. So it would be a zoning issue, not a building issue. Any necessary language that disagrees with the planning commission, that we have to report before the judge. We've got quite a few zoning ordinance issues, some definitions and a few changes in B and Bs. Basically, we're also trying to align the B and B language with health department, building code. What we were having is people would apply for a B and B and maybe get a six-room, six-bedroom B and B. When they go down to the building department, they find out this meeting, it's no longer residential, now it's commercial. And they say, we don't want that extra bedroom in the health department. So you've got a six-bedroom B and B zoning permit, special permit, but you've got a five-bedroom B and B there because of the building code. And it's just, oh, that's difficult to track because sometimes I don't think it came back. Anybody realize that with that sound? I didn't realize that it did a different commercial category.
Can we talk about enforcement a little later here, right?
Correct.
Next item is 170 dash 74E. This is non-conforming uses. And what we've been doing with this one is really interpreting, interpreting it correctly. And an example of this would be the FT valve store. That if a use lapses for more than two years, it is no longer grandfathered. So we've been doing that and that's correct. The problem that comes into question is the next item, which is what happens when somebody doesn't use their special permit? They've often been told that if they don't use it in two years, they would lose it. But what the zoning ordinance really says is that it is an indefinite period of time, that they don't have to use it within those two years. Basically, unless the planning commission or the BCA states that it ends at when the property is sold, then it just goes on indefinitely. So that's what the language says. That's not what's necessarily been done. What the planning commission recommended is that if you were using it at the time of the sale, then it would transfer with the property. But if it's not operational at that time, then the special use or special exception terminates.
Right. It being the permit, right?
It being the permit, correct.
That's correct.
And we still have some trouble tracking that in our office. And so I think we probably need to put some administrative language in there that says that people need to come back in and not necessarily apply for the permit, but let us know that the ownership has changed. So I think we may need to include that in our planning commission forms. But it doesn't mean that they have to pay the $400 again and, you know, reapply and go through the planning and zoning needs.
I just had a thought. I mean, they have to renew their current annually with the health department, right? Do we have any connection between the two? And maybe it's not, it's not if they're not applying?
I mean, not at this point, but that's an option. But we need to figure out a way to tie that together.
Well, maybe that, what do you mean by using it? I mean, what's the definition of using?
That if you have a B and B and you're operational and you're having tourists coming in that's using it. If you've been sitting there and you haven't done anything for two years, then at the time of sale, it would go away.
I see a little bit of a problem here in that, say, somebody has a B and B. I know we're old enough. They fall sick, one of them falls sick and they can't keep it up. And in the process, knowing that they can't keep it up, they temporarily close the B and B because they can't do it while they're selling the property. Now, if it takes a year to sell the property, then they lost their right to sell that use with the...
I would say under this definition that that would, that that would be the case.
I would have a little bit of a problem with that.
Maybe they sell it in two years?
Yeah, one of the concerns is that, you know, they're going to get more money for it if they can sell it as a B and B.
I see.
We'll move on to the next item, 170 dash 50B. This one is once a special permit or special exception has been granted. However, the use, and the term use, shall not be enlarged, extended, increased in intensity or relocated unless an application is made for a new special permit or special exception. And this is one that has been causing quite a bit of controversy. And this has to do, for example, with Parma, who came in and had a three-bedroom B and B. They requested an additional three-bedroom B and B. They withdrew their application, but they kept the same plans and built their home. And they have signed a document that states that it's their residence. In the past, the use has been the use that is defined by the special permit, not the use of the entire home. So if you put it in that the use is the home, then they would be required to come in if they do any remodeling with their home and apply for a permit again. So what the planning commission recommended is that if you are changing the construction of the structure that is specifically being utilized for the special use or special exception permit, it requires a new or amended permit. So for example, in the Parma case, if that were a new circumstance, then if they were leaving the three bedrooms completely alone and not touching them, they could go out and build whatever house they wanted to. If they are taking and remodeling the three rooms that are currently a B and B, then they would have to come in and apply for an entire permit again.
Enlarge and discuss the use.
Right. And that does leave some gray areas. We talked about remodeling the kitchen, putting in a pool. You know, some of those things would be done because they are a B and B. And we recognized that there were some gray areas and there was talk about leaving it up to the zoning administrator to determine if they were appropriate in dealing with just the use or whether it was the other part of the house. Next item is 170 dash 70B, non-guest houses. This is one that has been managed well in the past, but the language does not match the practice. So the PC's recommendation is to add the language where you can either have either a bath or a kitchen, not both, for a guest house. Utilize the current practice of 800 square feet, which is what we've been doing, within 100 feet of the main house to be approved administratively. And we also need to include the definition of a guest house.
When you say include the definition of a guest house, do you have a, do you have a separate area for definition?
It's really not very clear, so it needs to be defined better. But it would include, yeah. But it's, it would need to be incorporated with this definition. Complaint versus enforcement. Basically, we have been a complaint-driven system that if we receive a complaint, we address it. Or if it's something that's really obvious, we've addressed it. We really don't have the personnel to really enforce it. It takes a lot of time to research it, to learn the history, to visit the location, take pictures. There really wasn't a change in the PC's recommendation. I think they still felt, to use Mr. Frasier's words, we don't want a Gestapo enforcement policy.
It's a lot of those little things.
Right. Little Beanie has, it's recommended, that we do need to enforce it when we get complaints and when we see something obvious. I think the problem with that, though, is that there are people that don't realize that they're out of compliance. And so it's two years later, some neighbor gets mad at them, they don't realize they're out of compliance. And now you're going to write to them and say, you're not in compliance. So that's not a perfect system, but it certainly is better than trying to enforce it at this point without the personnel needed. And the last one is residence versus commercial. We've had a lot of people that have talked about some of the houses that are going up that look like they're going to be something else, but they are McMansions. And Mr. Burke has been very cautious to ensure that they're signing off as a residence, not as a commercial. They are building to residential standards. If they choose to go back and be a commercial, they will have to upgrade to commercial standards and go through the SUP process or the SE process, special use or special exception. I don't think that we can choose to tell people the homes to build or not to build. So we're requiring them to sign a document that states that we are, that they are in kind of residential. If we do what the PC has recommended and have a zoning ordinance, we can try to catch it there as well and have signed documents that indicate that. But we don't know that we have control over when people choose to build on their property as long as they're needing zoning and building codes.
Commend the point of admission for setting the target for this.
Did a good job.
So this will go to public hearing?
Well, I think, I think that you need to let me know or Mr. Luke know if you need better clarification. It needs to go to public hearing. There's some other things that we need to look at. I think this has been so controversial in the community that we may want to look at doing something with this sooner than later so that we can go ahead, start administering some of this and maybe bring some of the other amendments to you. But I'll leave that up to you, gentlemen.
So what is the exact process of amending the zoning ordinance to accommodate some of these changes?
It would be reviewing the wording, making sure that it's accurately reflects what you want, and then having a public hearing.
Well, if it's a text amendment, you have to refer to the planning commission. So we just did that on the adaptive use thing. You know, I drew up, I proposed ordinance.
Right, right.
You refer to the planning commission, and the planning commission generally has 90 days, or sometimes they're longer than that. To have a public hearing and then make a recommendation to you, when it comes back to you, you have to have a second public hearing and then you vote on it. So it's like two months built in just for, by the time you go through your public hearings, or at least two months and sometimes more than that.
Well, this, this document here is very constructive and I think we should just pursue what the planning commission came up with on Friday and build in those text changes and go on with it. I'm prepared on language changes from what I've seen this afternoon.
I think the only couple of late language changes that they, they do have to visit across us. But we're working on it now with several other issues. And some of them go forward.
Some of them went up there? Yeah, I agree. Sooner the better.
But the issue with the permanent sunset, I don't know how, somehow it all got off. Quite a few people in the community are, I guess I consider as relevant, the sunset, there's no sunset in those permits and it doesn't make any sense. Quite a few people in the community are, um, I guess I, I think that there's relative sunset, there's no sunset in those permits and it doesn't make any sense. It's, it's a ticking time bomb, have all these unused pieces.
Well, according to this, the sunset is a change of use if it, if, I mean, changes thought of, uh, changes, uh, ownership.
Well, some counties do that, but, uh, several of the commissioners argue that, as, as Mr. Bennett said, you know, that, you know, the use is, is only tolerated.
Right. But we could leave that, what if the zoning, uh, administrator to interpret?
Well, in the case of-
Well, you probably want to make it a little bit plainer because if you get public hearing, it's going to end around there.
Well, in the case of sunset, um, you know, they're, they're closed down for major renovation, reconstruction, or their building.
Well, then, yeah, I don't think that that's, I mean, it says, I think the word that says right now some of the language, uh, for, uh, for the non-conforming uses, uh, it issues beyond their control. So, I mean, obviously, if you're kind of doing renovations because of damage, some kind of storm damage or, you know, water damage or something, I don't think they'd, I don't think, I don't think she would have a clock running.
Right.
You know, we'd make it suns. But two years, obviously, it's just going up and sitting there because it's a big property.
Are you saying that you want to wait and let the planning commission go through those amendments and then bring them all back, which would be another month later? It would be dismembered.
Well, I, I, I don't know, it doesn't make that much sense because of the, uh, we don't have to worry about printing so much, it's what we used to, I guess I'm still stuck in the, you know, from nineteen ninety, uh, we printed everything on paper. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to get all that together, print a, a, a paper version, but with the electronic edition, we can change what's necessary. So you could do a-
Piecemeal?
You know, kind of pieced it.
Yeah, I'd say we go ahead with these changes and then, and then start to plan the, uh, the other changes.
Whatever, I don't want procrastination.
There was a motion by Chris. On the second?
Yeah, the second, yeah.
Any motion second? All of the flavors say aye?
Aye.
All of those aye? You do it. County attorney position.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something after that. Uh, we've got a situation where, uh, the, our county administrator and county attorney are, are basically, uh, got more in their plate than they can take care of. And, uh, so we need some fairly quick, uh, fixes for all this. And, uh, concerning the county attorney position, uh, it's, uh, it's true that it's my personal opinion and that, that the county attorney and the zoning administrator, uh, be the same. Uh, just to save on office space and save on, uh, uh, health insurance and to, uh, that would ensure the fact that, uh, that the zoning administrator had a good legal knowledge, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and I, and I did share that with, uh, Mr. Blaine on a phone conversation. I had called him to thank him for what he does for the county and to see if he had any new right ideas. And in a personal conversation, uh, I divulged to him that it was not in any way in reference to what we discussed in closed session. It was just my personal opinion and I talked about it. I have approached all of the board members individually and I've talked to the public about it. And guess what? Uh, none of the, I'm the only one that had that position. The other board members sitting up here, none of them actually came along with it. Uh, so if the rumor got started that this, that, that we were thinking about doing that, I'm, I take the blame for that. That's my fault. I was basically, thought it was a good idea. I talked about it openly in public. And, uh, and I didn't give anywhere with the public or my fellow board members. At any rate, uh, we've, uh, reached a point where, uh, the, uh, you know, we're trying to fill the county attorney position as of, uh, January one, at which time Mr. Luke retires. And, uh, so, uh, meanwhile, he, uh, it kinda needs some help now. And so I would, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that, uh, we hire a deputy county attorney, uh, precisely, uh, Art Goff, at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, to, uh, work part-time through the rest of the year, at which time he becomes county attorney at that same pay, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, uh, assuming that he's still happy and we're still happy. Uh, so the benefit there is, uh, he already has an office here. He, he already has his insurance and, uh, he already has a secretary. And, uh, he's, uh, right there in the same office that Mr. Luke shares, uh, so that he would be, uh, available as, as Mr. Luke's deputy. And, uh, that's it, and that's my motion. He will not be his own administrator.
So that's clear, he would not be his own administrator?
He will not be, and, uh, although he would be subject to advisement, uh, Ms. Kaiser.
Can I ask a question? I, I thought it was just me, but I remember some years back, Mr. Luke had said that because he had been both, holding both positions at one time, he'd been, to stay in make a kind of attorney position full-time. His grandfather then, but that he couldn't do that anymore. A new, a new person couldn't do that. But I thought that was just me, but I had a call over the weekend from someone in the county and they, they, their memory was just like mine that that was sent in a public meeting that Mr. Luke said he was grandfather, so I, I don't even know now. I'd like to have the clarification on that before we go further, can, can Mr. Goff actually service that?
As the, uh, common attorney and the part-time, and the part-time deputy county attorney?
I think we would need to see statute on that before we go further.
Yes, as far as that, yeah.
Yeah, I believe he can. Uh, I could do it. There's an attorney general's opinion that says that, uh, a full-time, uh, commons attorney can serve as county attorney because it's not deemed to have a, uh, clients that are drawn from the public at large who represent the government. So I don't know of any legal impediment to what Mr. Parrish has just moved from.
So if we can, if I get a second, we'll discuss further.
Given there's no legal impediment, uh, opinion of the county attorney, I'll second that.
Do you have a motion? I have a second. All those fingers say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed aye?
Present.
Motion here. Go. Now, assistant.
Outreach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I put this on here, uh, just for discussion. You know, in the spirit of, uh, the recent conversations about further public comment or additional public comment in our meetings, uh, since you've been getting a whole lot of traction on that, uh, a, an alternative to that would be, what in effect I think is known these days as a town hall. And I do think that, uh, we've got a lot of interest in the public here. Needing the benefit of this board, as it says in here quarterly, but even semi-annually, uh, for us to simply have a, afford the public an opportunity, uh, to come before us and discuss whatever may be on their mind. Now, I know, uh, there's a person who has, um, feeling that we're already having quite a few meetings and adding additional meetings, you know, adds a strain to this board. And if I'm not mistaken, and Ms. Kaiser, you can confirm this for me, I think just by this meeting here alone, we now have three public hearings that we have to do, which are typically in the evening. Uh, I don't know if this can all be done in one meeting or if that's gonna have to be done in multiple meetings. So I, I respect and appreciate the board's concern for the additional time that they have to spend, uh, if you do have in fact, uh, a community outreach session. But, uh, and I understand Mr. Fr- Mr. Eric, she's gonna be out of, at town here, uh, for a portion of October, so probably having it in October is maybe not the best date because I want to afford everybody the opportunity to attend. And anything after Thanksgiving, I think, is, falls on the deaf ears or the holidays. So, uh, perhaps we could do something in November. I think this, the, two weeks after our November meeting would be the twenty-first, that is the Monday prior to Thanksgiving. And I guess, you know, I'll open it to the board here, see if they had any, any thoughts on that. It isn't action item for today, but, um, and I would see this maybe rotating throughout the county in different districts. I'm happy to host first one. See if the Washington Fire Hall is available, rather than having it here at the courthouse. Uh, or it could always be in the high school auditorium, we can figure that detail out. But I'm just proposing this as a, in response to what I hear consistently in the public that this board needs to be more, uh, available for input. So, I'll put that idea forward and see what my board members think.
Do you have a comment? Over the years, what I've done in English, Bill, is try to tie it to something like, uh, maybe a D V A project or something similar to that. I haven't had too many, I mean, recently. But fire halls are better attended than court halls.
I got two M E M Ts here, I'll use one.
You are? Firehouse meetings are better attended than the court house, generally, much better than my experience. More informal atmosphere.
I think they're potentially a, a good opportunity for both the, uh, board here and the, uh, the community to, to open up and, uh, be able to talk to each other. Uh, when you have this little rail between us, it's a little bit difficult when you're limited with a potential three-minute time period and, uh, when you have the whole crowd listening, I think that if people feel uncomfortable in opening up, but potentially in a more, um, I'll say relaxed atmosphere where we're not wearing skirts and ties and, um, you might, uh, be able to, um, help avoid some of the, uh, feelings of the public that we aren't available and that we don't, um, hear what their needs are. So, I'm, I'm for it. I'm, we're at least trying it out, see if we get the, uh, the public coming out and willing to talk to us.
Or we could, we could do it in October. I don't know, Chris, you're not gonna be here, but if, if November twenty-first is during Thanksgiving week and it's, uh, you know, people are taking off that week, that may not be optimal.
I don't think it is.
You know, uh, in the spirit of trying, which is going, but knowing that everybody may not be able to be there.
Can do it in October.
Would be, in that case, it would be two weeks from today, the seventeenth. I've actually already checked the calendar with the Fire Hall and it's available.
That's fine with me. I, uh, you know, I, I'm always available to the public. I've turned every single phone call I've got in these last six or seven years. And, um, so, and I think most people know that, uh, and, uh, so I'll just send, this is the first one.
I think it will be more.
Are you thinking quarterly or?
Well, I think that might be a little aggressive. I don't know, maybe, uh, maybe semi-annually. Well, I'll tell you, um, quarterly's, quarterly's, uh, issues.
Okay. Well, I thought so too.
Maybe just get to the first one and see how.
Yeah, let's see how it goes. Nobody shows up, then they won't.
It's before Halloween, so I think they'll still be using their pockets.
Just another thing for ten ninety, so.
So I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion, gentlemen, that we, uh, have a community outreach session on, uh, Monday evening, October seventeenth at seven P M. The evening is important, uh, in the Washington Fire Hall.
Okay, so we can, so we can topics.
So we can topics.
I have a motion. I don't know if we need one, but other than a census vote, we've got a lot of talented people in this county, so it should be beneficial.
Do we have a motion for that?
We don't need it.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, charter I'm looking for.
This is for the Region Nine, uh, group and, um, the executives that attend. This is a change in their charter for membership and, uh, voting of membership. And the copy of the charter has been attached as well, with the changes, as well as the, um, resolution. So, are there any questions?
Just kind of what brought this on, you know, or?
Some of the smaller townships have had trouble getting representation. And so they wanted to open it up instead of it having to be one person, that's the mayor and, you know, county administrator or whatever. They want to be able to open it up to citizens.
Okay.
So if the mayor of your particular town couldn't come, he could add someone else to.
Right, right. And they would have voting power.
Replace. Oh.
And each, each, uh, government body has to approve these submitted, uh, amended charter?
Right. I think it says two-thirds have to approve it. Two-thirds of the membership of the subdivisions have to approve it.
And also time on the commission, I'll make the motion to accept this right motion.
And I'll second it.
Motion made in second. All those flavors say aye?
Aye.
It looks like a roll call.
It is, yeah, it's a roll call.
Yeah, it did set up a roll call, but on whether, way the, uh, resolutions run it out.
Aye, Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And Mr. Welch says, uh, also. But that's the point. Okay. Amosville, Flatwood, uh, Recycle Recycling Center.
Um, I put together a proposed, um, schedule for potential hours at the Amosville and Flatwood, um, recycling centers. Um, based on the comments that they received, um, you know, they get a lot of people making comments about what's convenient for them. Uh, there's a number of people that don't like, um, the Flatwoods closed on Monday and Tuesday. Um, so what we did is we put together what we think we've heard, but again, these are the people that have just made passing comments. Um, and our goal is to accommodate the public. So what I wanted to do was to put these out on board docs and let them sit for a month or two and just get feedback from the citizens. Um, so while you all are talking to people or people give us a call, we could talk to them and let them know that they're out there and, um, just find out what it is that the public really wants. Um, and then we can make changes accordingly. Also, there is a brochure out there that Candy and Jimmy and I have worked on together because people, I think, get confused about what they can take, what they can't take, what the charges are. And, uh, we've heard some comments about signage that's needed. So, um, we're hopefully going to work on the signage. We want to work on the recycling chart as well. This is just a rough draft that's out there and again, these are just proposed hours to get public comment. Um, is, do you all support getting the public comment on that and, uh, looking at it at a future date?
Mr. Black, aye?
I have a, a question. Um, on the Bible, that first page, it proposed work, working a ten-hour day, but yes, the, uh, many days, um, On the Bible, that first page, it proposed working a ten hour day, but yet the many days facility is open more than ten hours, some of the days are twelve hour days. So I was wondering if.
We'll need to look at that.
Especially in Flatwood.
Right, because that is a twelve hour day. The intent is not to cost the county any more money, so we would not do anything that would create additional overtime or additional cost. So I think that's something that they would like to see or a few of them would like to see, so we'll look into it, but we don't have any suggestions at this point. And again, this is supposed to be cost neutral to the county.
I was just looking for clarity. I don't know how they work it now. If when you have a twelve hour day, you split it up between two people or?
It varies and they work well together. You know, they help each other out when somebody's sick, somebody else comes in. So it's a very fluid schedule and I wouldn't expect that to change, so.
Well, the next question is, it looks like Amistville traditionally was seven thirty to five thirty, but yet Flatwood was seven to seven on many days. Do they find that many people need to have it open later in the day, seven o'clock or earlier in the day? At seven or?
I would think if they're going to work or from work, appreciate that.
Yeah, and there's a lot of people that go in on Sunday nights at seven o'clock because they're weekenders, so you know, they're stopping by their trash before they hit it back. So there's a lot of people on Sunday in particular that go by Flatwood.
Well, I personally like the idea of it, Flatwood being open on Monday because Sundays, I don't get the trash out on Sunday. There it has to sit until Wednesday.
Maybe a concern is when you're, I'm afraid if Amistville were closed at one day, you're going to have, you're going to have trouble with the illegal dumping of the brush piles. If they don't make it by five thirty, before five thirty on Tuesday, then they have to get the truck on the road somehow so they go back to work.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, maybe Amistville will stay like this.
It's not an issue with Sam. In the words of great philosopher, Harold Guthrie, it's better to have one green big pallet of brush than twenty seven little pallets of brush scheduled around the county.
I suppose a public opinion would be needed and I guess some input. I don't know how many people bring brush in.
I don't know. I just noticed that the trucks don't, so I don't know. Have to take them from the drive-in or something that they can use elsewhere.
Or taking them someplace else, you know.
So I mean, is this a cost, this is a cost saving measure? No, because we're going from, you know, three closed days to four closed days. So obviously we're saying we're going to pay our people more money, whether that's overtime or additional.
Well, we're doing that now, so it probably would be a small cost saving. And we'll, we'll determine the exact final numbers when we get an idea of what it is that people are really thinking about. But we do hear a lot of people talk about the Mondays and Tuesdays in particular being
So this is going to public comment?
I don't know that it needs to go to public comment. I think we can.
Well, I'm fine with switching Flatwood, but I think Amistville will stay like it is. Just closed on Sunday because if it's closed one day a week, you're never going to remember which day it is.
But it used to be, it was major consent or something.
Yeah. If it's closed Sunday, that's fine, but I think it should stay like it is.
And there used to be a little sign out at the end of the road that if it was used, you could see that they were over closed, but if you drove past it, you forgot about it. But it's not been used for a long time.
I guess just where the cost ramifications are of keeping it open for the way it is, it's not going to be a costly impact to change the days around Flatwood, it's just.
Correct.
So if something's, something's changed in there where it's going to be more expensive now to continue to keep Amistville open for how it is.
Well, we'll come back to the board when we know what that is.
Yeah, that is. It's not going to be as expensive too, but no, not looking at the financial impact.
The next item, resolutions for affirming the county attorney's file.
Attorney client, please. I had to speak to this, Mr. Chairman. This is part of my request. When I wrote this, as you can tell from the first paragraph, we had only received a draft complaint about this drag lawsuit, such a complaint was filed against you, as you all know. In that suit, certain allegations are made about what was stated in closed session. Often in these closed sessions, I am there rendering legal advice to you on many matters that we talk about, including a matter here that had to do with hiring my replacement. It's important to point out that when I render legal advice to this board, I'm rendering it to you as a board as a whole, I'm not rendering it to you, it to you as individuals. The attorney-client privilege attaches to what I say. That privilege can only be waived by you as a board, not by individual members. So it's important to point, to point that out in case someone's operating on the misconception that they can talk about what is protected by the attorney-client privilege without getting an affirmative vote from this board to do so. I didn't want it left out there that somehow people could think, well, yeah, we can, we can get this attorney-client information and use it to sue the board. So this, this resolution affirms your right. Somebody saw this as a gag order, this is not a gag order. This is an assertion of your right and every citizen's right to have the attorney-client privilege and what is, what takes place in attorney-client privilege is confidential. It's not to be released to the public or anyone else without a consent of the client. And you being the client, as far as I know, you haven't consented to anything in terms of what took place in our closed session. So in order to make sure this, it's clear, I've drawn this resolution up, it has a where at clauses that essentially say what I've just said. It only asserts a right you already have, which is to the attorney-client privilege. It doesn't say, doesn't put any new right or anything, but it lets people know that we have not waived that right. And therefore I'm asking you to adopt this. It's not in order, it's either, it's just a resolution. I'm asking you to adopt this and I believe it's appropriate in light of the fact that it's contained in the suit that's been filed against you.
So where, Mr. Look, where does that right exist now? Is that in the, is that in the Virginia code that spells out this right and we're just, we're just.
The right, the right is what's called common law right. It exists at law, it exists in the rules of professional responsibility that govern me and every attorney has a license to practice is bound by this, this rule. I cannot talk about what we talk about in closed session, that's attorney-client material, unless you authorize that. And none of you can talk about it unless the board authorized. You're not, individually, you're not allowed to waive that privilege. So that needs to be made clear. That's, that's what we call common law. It's also the law with respect to the authorities that license me to practice and every attorney to practice. So, yeah, you're not going to find in the code of Virginia the reference to attorney-client privilege except in certain steps that have to do with licensing of counsel. That's there. That's why you have, that's why we should have it. To give you legal advice that is confidential.
I'll make this motion to adopt this resolution. I think it's important that the attorney-client has that right to privacy, or it's not privacy,
Motion made.
Well, I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, discussion. I think this is, this is good in some areas, but not, not totally because as most people are aware, we are in a little bit of trouble right now with possible FOIA measures. And FOIA laws specifically state that no local organization who enacted it, you know, that's contrary to the FOIA act, so you have to be vetting that. Also, my biggest complaint with this is that somehow this resolution made it to our agenda about prior board approval, unless somehow the gentleman approved it in a private setting.
I approve it.
She didn't have authorization. This is a board, a board prerogative. This is a board decision. This should have been talked about by the board and opened before. And I think that's most of the problem that the public has with it. They don't understand how this stuff should have been denied. If it's a board policy, it should have been discussed openly by this board, or by this forum. And then, then you wouldn't have as much kickback as you have today or something like that.
Well, with that, well, with the speed in which this suit is being put upon us, we really didn't have the time to discuss this in an open board meeting before the public.
I understand that, but if the attorney-client privilege didn't exist, if it still does, but we didn't equip this alone, it just, it just hasn't, it just has an appearance out there to public. They don't like the blind side, especially don't like the blind side.
We have a motion, we have a second.
We have a second?
Yes.
John's second.
All those in favor?
We will call, Mr. Chairman.
We'll call. Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Zensky.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Roger Welch, aye also. It just seems to me that that would be taken away a lot. So I said taken away a lot, but it's a bad thing. If the right existed before, then this just gave them more right. Just push there. All right, we'll see. Red ribbon.
He does not, it's just.
Red ribbon.
All right, I'm hungry. Anyway, we, we talked about this last year and I asked for your support, you know, to allow red ribbons to be out in the courthouse, employees to wear red ribbons, et cetera. And I'm here to ask you again, there's this red ribbon proclamation and it's just, you know, you guys saying that you agree and support the message, Tori, I don't people are. Last year, you know, it was really great for our first time out of the gate and I actually ended up in the MAD statewide newsletter, Ratahan High School, when our red ribbon worked. So it would be really great to have your support in signing this, the little proclamation and maybe I would frame it. At the high school, they're going to, they always have this big window display case decorated for red ribbon week. It would go a long way to see that the board supervisors also support the message and we could frame it and put it in there. And, yeah, October seventeenth is the next MAD meeting, just saying. And I've heard from Mr. Swindler and Joy Richardson at the high school that they recently had their first SAD meeting of the year and it turned out was the best ever. So I like to think that MAD and SAD working together has helped they get the message out. I spoke at the pre-prom assembly, that helped also. So, you know, extending the community-wide support and message would be very much appreciated and I think would help the kids. Any questions?
Ms. Tiffin.
Yes, go ahead.
Very good, man. It might also be interesting to note that the high school is going to create some large ribbons that we were, they're going to ask all the businesses in Ratahan to post during that week. So that businesses, households, your house, if you want a ribbon, they do a ribbon to you, put it on your mailbox, whatever, going to pretend like it's Christmas. But it's, it's an idea that the kids had to extend, awaken the high school and put the, the notion out there that everybody supports the red ribbon.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and, oh, did we go ahead and adopt this and sign the resignment, move the process along because it's a great idea. We did it last year and drugs and alcohol is a big problem in this county and country and we can't draw attention to it, so it's been a long, so can't get up there and bait your appetite.
I feel like teenage child.
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience. I'll second of course.
Sitting here a long time. Those seats are even harder than these.
Yeah, I don't think, just the way you got a motion on the second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye.
What time is your meeting on the seventeenth and where?
Six thirty at the library. It's the second, second Monday of every month because the Tuesday was the school board meeting and the first Monday was this meeting, so it was kind of hard to dodge in that bullet. But I mean, not everybody's going to go to there with my meetings, so we'll share.
Great.
Is it okay to get this to you tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have some of these little red magnet things you can throw in your car if you guys want, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. New payroll.
Chairman, I'll talk to you about a new payroll system quite a while back, but we had some issues with ATRIX, that is our current system, that had gone down and, you know, the one thing you don't want to mess up on is employees' paychecks. And we have managed to keep the system alive and going, but it is very fragile and I'm not sure that it can be redeemed. We did put money in the budget, which you approved, for a payroll system and the amount that you put into the payroll budget line was seven thousand dollars. Candy has done an excellent job of going out and getting quotes on that. We had a quote from A D P, Dominion and Keystone, and you had said that you just wanted an update when we had made a decision. So if there's no objection, what we'd like to do is to move forward with A D P. They're well-known and well-respected. Our auditors have approved them. The price was very comparable to Dominion. Keystone, which is our current accounting system, was way out of line from a price that we could really afford. Theirs was twenty-five thousand dollars and we'll be able to get A D P this year for five thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. So it really put Keystone out of the market for us. The great news about the A D P system is that it'll be employee online access, so we won't have to worry about paper handing that out anymore. Everybody will be able to go online and see their paychecks. They're going to take over a lot of the tax work that Candy's having to do, so they'll be issuing W twos, they'll be doing state taxes and not forty ones. So it'll help to relieve some of the work that's being done in the office. And the really great news is that we don't have a payroll backup, but that's bad news. But the good news is, is that A D P will help us through the process. So if Candy's out and I need to do it, they'll work over the phone with me and tell me how to do it because unless you do it once a quarter, you're not going to remember how to do it. So we are vulnerable by not having a backup on the system, but A D P will hopefully help give us that backup. So we're looking at seven months this year. That is prorated, as I said, to five thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars in the year. So, we're looking at seven months this year. That is prorated, as I said, to five thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-three cents compared to the budget line of seven thousand dollars. So, again, that amount's been approved. If you have no objection, I'd like to move forward with that and implement it either December first or, um, January first.
Well, it's pretty hard to argue with that presentation.
I have a question. Is this gonna create us phasing out the rest of Keystone? Do you want to know, or?
No, it won't, um, do anything regarding Keystone. Debbie will have an Excel spreadsheet that will come out of ADP, and then it can be easily converted into Keystone. So while it's not the same system, uh, they do integrate. While not, but it should not be a problem.
Does ADP also do the rest of the, uh, accounting also, or are they just payroll?
Um, we didn't ask them. I don't know whether they do other, other, if they have other packages or not.
No, just curious.
And if they do, I don't know that it would be for the Commissioner of Revenue. That's really the more complicated program. So even if they did the financial piece, I don't know that they would do the Commissioner of Revenue piece, so.
Right. Thank you.
Is there consensus for that, or?
Yes, um, I don't think we need to make a motion since the amount was approved.
I think it's a good idea.
Thanks for the information.
So consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Um, I wanted to let you know that October the thirteenth at ten o'clock, DEQ is coming in, and, um, we have a water supply document that needs to be updated. I've invited, um, the Town of Washington and the Water and Sewer Authority so that we can meet with DEQ. If any of you are interested in attending, um, please feel free to come. It's going to be at the Town of Washington. But I think it's important that we all work together, so she'll be in. It'll probably be about an hour meeting and a presentation by her. Also, I wanted to let you know that, uh, I have received a phone call from a gentleman by the name of Brad White. He's working with the Rappahannock River Basin, and they are interested in putting in a well in Rappahannock County. There's a lot of information to learn yet about this, but I wanted to give you a heads up about it. They want to do groundwater testing. There is already a stream gauge that is in the Bend-Venu, um, and the Rappahannock River Basin area. So they wanna be able to put a well in that area as well. It would be very beneficial to gauge the stream and the well at the same time. If we do that, it will give Rappahannock a lot of personal information that we need about our water supply, as well as, you know, their work on a national level. We don't own land that I'm aware of in that area, so we probably will need to talk to someone in that area and see if they would be willing to work with us. It cannot be used, even if it's constructed. It needs to be used strictly for testing, um, and the cost would be about fifteen thousand dollars. So I told them that I would mention it to you today. I will get more information. We can see if that's something that we want to invest in after we have more information, and we can look at putting it in the budget, um, for next year. So I'll keep working on this if I have your support on that, and, um, get back to you as more information becomes available.
Let me just add that, that, that fifteen thousand would be the cost if the whole project was done, but since there's already, uh, the rain gauge there, uh, in conjunction with this stream monitor, this is a battle run like you said, twenty-nine.
Right.
Uh, that it won't, it won't be that expensive. Uh, I mean, it might be, the majority of the cost may be there, but it will not be the entire fifteen thousand dollars. And there's only two landowners there. One's Chris Jones, and the other one's, uh, Mr. Pan, or Bill Pan.
How close do they want the well to there?
To the rain gauge? It, uh, it can, just where they can connect it, wires, uh, so that the information can pass, uh, from one to the other. And of course, uh, part of the reason they want it is that, uh, in this part of the world, uh, all our groundwater comes from, you know, Rockford Rock. For example, I have two wells within a hundred yards of each other. One's got a hundred and thirty gallons a minute, and one's got five. So, so they're kind of just, they, they wanna see, uh, what's happening to the water table, uh, uh, there. So, I mean, it seems to be a good idea that it's, it would be the only one in this part of the state, uh, the rest of them would be, uh, you know, some distance from here. So I, I don't know. Mr. Lozinski was also at, uh, people gathering. Do you have anything further?
I was, yes, uh, I was under the impression that there might be grant money available to offset the cost of about half of it, so it may not be, whether it's fifteen thousand or a little less than that, it may not be... You know, we may be able to get some assistance with that, uh, you know, again, it just has to do with, I think, because of our career, the time, and we're not, we're the most we can, uh, water table's beneficial, so I'll definitely support continuing to, uh, collect information on that.
Okay.
Is that gonna be part of the DEQ presentation on the thirteenth?
I don't know. I have not been able to get in touch with her, but I will ask her then to find out.
I have a question about, you said water supply, so you're talking about groundwater for clean water use as opposed to wastewater?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Because we have no, uh, I guess, except for Little Washington, if it's still up and running, uh, community water supply.
Right.
And it'll, it'll also test for contaminants, right?
And the last, uh, item that I have under my report would be an October seventeenth workshop. If you remember, we had talked about having a second meeting for a month, but we're almost through our agenda today, so, um, I'm thinking that we probably don't need that. Chris is out of town. We're gonna do the public open house, um, on October the seventeenth, so should I assume that we don't need an October seventeenth workshop meeting that day?
Can I say so?
I don't see any for it.
How about you guys?
All right, um, under correspondence, we have Columbia Gas notice, we have some animal shelter legislation that's out there, we have the building permit report, we have our monthly B dot report, and then we receive something for, uh, the Virginia tourism update. So those are all on board docs if anyone wishes to review them.
As the animal shelter, can I have any problems with, uh, fulfilling the new regulations? Do you know, or have you had any communication with them?
They were aware it was coming, and there are, you know, indications of any problems.
Okay.
What about Rapp cats? Are they now gonna have to fall under some of these laws that they didn't have to adhere to before?
No, I don't think so, but I don't know. I will check.
What are the regulations to the cats? Cats are like jackals. Okay, the next, final on the agenda is a closed session. Can I say something?
Oh.
I would. I would. I'm gonna take a break, and we're gonna go into closed session. I invite the public to wait until we finish our break and witness us go into closed session.
Okay. Uh, just so we don't have any more FOIA things?
Right, that's what I'm sure.
Well, my understanding is you need to have a resolution and vote on it in public before you go in.
That's what, that's what I'm inviting you to wait for.
Oh, you're in the five-minute break. You're gonna vote to go in and then go into closed session?
I assume we're gonna take a break, and then, and then we're gonna go into closed session, which we do, as always, under the guidance of our county attorney in a very legal way.
No, my understanding is the vote has to, vote to go in and has to be in public.
Yeah, so hang around.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Like we always do, but you guys can wait till after we take our break.
This one?
Good, good, thank you.
We have a few red ribbons, if anybody in the, if you like, put them.
We're gonna do what we always do, which is, uh, make a motion to, uh, conduct a closed meeting. I move that Rappahannock County Board Supervisor conduct a closed meeting in accordance with two point two dash thirty-seven eleven and thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia for the purposes summarized below. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consul, our consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation or briefing is open in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. All right, two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven, subject matter of the enclosed, of the closed meeting will be the petition for declaratory judgment style Marion M. Bragg versus Rappahannock County, now pending in circuit court. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business where no previous announcement has been made of the business's interest in locating or expanding Rappahannock County. Two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A five, subject matter of the closed meeting will be potential improvements at the landfill. So, uh, this is a, uh, road call, and, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and do that.
I'll second it.
All right, um, Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Lozinski.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
And I also.
So, let's make the motion and send it.
I do.
So we're closed?
Thank you, gentlemen.